Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Mr. Cal.
Here.
Mr. Cal.
Here.
Okay, so we'll lay down a couple of instructions for the. Oh, of course. Alan, since you provided.
That's right, to lead us in the. It certainly was. Well, it's pledged to lead the student life and I just. News there was. And we were like, for what you're saying is. One nation under God into the soul of liberty. Justice.
All right, so anyone who wishes to speak during this public hearing, applicant staff, public, will have to be sworn in. So anybody who wishes to speak, if you could stand and raise your hand, right hand for me. And repeat after me, I do solemnly swear. Or affirm. Under penalty or perjury. That you will tell the truth in these, that I will tell the truth in these proceedings. Thank you. That didn't go for department heads. Aren't they exempt from that? No, it's not going to hurt anything. It's like taking too many vitamins, right? It'll be fine. All right. So I need a motion to open the public hearing, right?
So.
Second.
Roll call Debbie.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Cal.
Yes.
And Mr. Cal.
Yes.
So this public hearing is regarding Davis and Nine Mile Road. Z C two zero two two dash zero zero four. Request for a zone map amendment to rezone the property located at thirty eight zero five. Nine Mile Tabasco Road to rezone the parcel from planned unit development P U D. To plan unit development residential P U D R. The applicant Joe Hussman, on behalf of owner Elizabeth Hussman. Is proposing one single family subdivision development. To construct thirty nine single family dwelling units. Eddie, do you want to start us off?
Sure. Hey, so brief summary, this is a zone map amendment for property located at thirty eight oh five. Nine Mile Tabasco Road. Thirty nine dwelling units, single family dwelling units are being proposed on the property. The applicant is Mr. Joe Huesman. The property is thirty point one two acres in area and is currently zoned planned unit development from. Uh, an old rezoning that is now defunct. The proposed zoning is P U D R, which is planned unit development residential. Current use is generally vacant and the future land use is designated as conventional residential with a mixed use option. The density, gross density proposed is one point two nine units per acre. Um, according to the November twenty twenty two plan submittal. The applicant is proposing twelve different home styles, two to four bedrooms in each. Uh, square footage of twelve hundred ninety six to twenty five fifty per. The lot size range is ten thousand five hundred square feet up to thirty five thousand five hundred and fifty four square feet in area. Active, active open space proposed as a trail system and the applicant also proposes sixteen hundred. Linear feet of roadways to be dedicated to the township. Utilities onsite are. One onsite stormwater detention facility. Uh, Claremont County sewer and water as well as an HOA. Which would maintain the open space sidewalks, trails, landscaping and so forth onsite. Phasing is proposed. To be eighteen months and there's only one phase. This is the applicant's middle from November twenty twenty two. Showing trail system, open space and the number of lots. Uh, lots proposed setbacks on the site, twenty five in the front, eight on the sides and thirty in the rear. Which is in line with the planned unit development. This is an aerial of the site. This is the topography of the site showing a number of steep slopes as well as a freshwater pond in the center of the site. There are also two overhead power line utilities that traverse the property and two towers on the site as well. It shows the property as well as adjacent zoning, Union Township to the north and Pierce Township to the south. So just to brief history, in two thousand and seven, the site was rezoned P U D R. In conjunction with a fifty two unit condominium proposal. Final development was never acted upon, so it became defunct. Twenty eighteen, the site was proposed for a new development plan and rezone at this time. Two hundred and sixteen multifamily units were proposed. However, the board of trustees voted to deny this proposal at the twenty eighteen public hearing. Numerous concerns on pertaining to the property, including stormwater and road issues as well as traffic and safety. So the zone, the first concept meeting with the zoning commission was on March first, twenty twenty two. Proposal included forty two single family lots at that time. Now, the planning commission at their, at their, at their public meeting. Moted to approve the development with eight. Conditions included therein. At the zoning commission's public hearing is September sixth, they tabled the matter in order to. For the applicant to have time to address a number of concerns in the staff report as well as other county comments. At the continuing public hearing on October nineteenth, twenty twenty two. The zoning commission recommended approval with the following three conditions. The applicant removed lots twenty nine, twenty four. The applicant worked with the fire department to replace lot thirty nine with a secondary access. Resulting in the removal of the stub roadway which was on the prior plan. And number three, the consolidation of the trail network. South of lots twenty three and twenty five to connect through future lots twenty eight and twenty seven. Staff reviewed this, the application in accordance with article seven of the. Pierce Township zoning resolution, which includes seven point oh three C one E two. The following deficiencies were found in the staff's review. Failure to resubmit relevant documents in accordance with article seven for review, including but not limited to the following. And there were two follow up emails included as well, which were on November twenty second and December second. Updated landscape plans were not resubmitted detailing. Street landscaping or on lot landscaping, similarly, the landscaping plan that you have in your packet includes lots that have since been removed. Updated plans regarding compliance with D one oh seven of the fire code were not included. Uh, drainage calculations justifying applicant's statements regarding over detainment of stormwater. Um, updated plans illustrating compliance with planning commission recommendations, including a cross section detail of the hiking trail. And or the removal of structures onsite. Which would include a barn to the northeastern corner of the site. Uh, deficient panhandle lots are still shown, which do not meet the minimum lot width requirements. Despite repeated commentary regarding seven point oh four two, which are the lot standards. Uh, no deviations are requested, however. There are items such as. Sidewalk network as well as panhandle lots shown that are deficient. Number two, failure to meet the spirit and intent of the land use plan. This is compliance conflict B B as part of section seven point oh three of the review materials. Conventional residential suggests that the areas. Are those with minimal slope constraints accessible to centralized sewer and are serviced by roadways with. Available capacity and where a number of existing large scale developments already in the township. Uh, number three, failure to meet the spirit and intent of the P U D. So specifically, deployment of conventional design on a site with unconventional issues, including but not limited to. Architecture lacking substance, substantiate substantive variety and massing design and character. Overhead utility lines and so forth. Number four, overhead utility lines. Reduce buildable and usable area onsite and potentially inhibit numerous lots. In constructing potential accessory structures. There are also two lots directly on uh, home lots thirty two and lot number one. The design allows significant adverse impacts on residential lots. Duke Energy was not contacted by the applicant despite stated concerns. This is a compliance conflict with A, E and H. So a- as it stands right now, the plan that you have, we're unsure as to whether or not it's actually compliant with Duke setback requirements. And we know for sure that a number of, that the easement does in fact encompass. The overwhelming majority of a number of lots onsite as well. Of the backyards, rather. Number five, the removal of the freshwater pond onsite without any effort to retain this asset conflicts with the P U D. The P U D exists to promote the preservation of these assets. This is compliance conflict A and G. Number six, significant encroachment on the hillsides and tree lines. There are at least nine lots to the east of the, east of the property that encroach. The landscape plans which are outdated and not updated after um. The number of alterations were requested at the zoning commission meeting. Uh, still illustrate deficient land, deficient cover. So the removal of trees and impact of, an impact of this natural resource can also have profound impacts on stormwater as well as aesthetics. Which conflicts with A and G of the P U D. Number seven, there's a complete misalignment of the entrance with Michael Drive, which Michael Drive is on the Union Township side. Of, of the development, which is on the north side. This is compliant, compliance conflict with letter C of the P U D. There is conventional stormwater designs, right? Design rather than deployment of discussed items such as rain barrels, additional swales and so forth as supplements. Apparent failure to understand that proper preservation and further BMPs, which are best management practices. Could be deployed to meet the spirit and intent of the P U D and land use plan. Um, again, with the P U D. There are some general checklist items, however, there's a spirit and intent. That the P U D allows smaller lot sizes because an applicant is producing a product that is of higher quality than the underlying standard zone. Failure to comply with D one oh seven of the fire code. Um, in providing proper access arrangement for emergency services. And number ten, Davis Nine Mile intersection in Nine Mile Road have geometric deficiencies which are confirmed by the county engineer's office. Uh, there is concern also regarding site distances. And the deployment of fire apparatus, equipment and response vehicles, which needs to be clarified. The proposed lot sizes are smaller than surrounding lots in the vicinity, which tend to be around a half acre or twenty, twenty thousand nine hundred square feet in area approximately. The active amenity is a semi replacement of the sidewalk system with no further enhancement. For, for instance, numerous P U Ds in the township exist. Which uh, which have golf courses, driving ranges, pools, clubhouses and similar. The trail system materials are not delineated in accordance with the planning commission's condition number two, which was to add a detailed cross section. With the product type listed for the proposed hike, hiking trail. So based upon township land use documents and land use and regulatory documents, staff believes that the proposed development is inappropriate at this time. Stack recommends denial in reiterating the aforementioned items as well as the items bullet pointed here below. Uh, staff, of course, is available if you have any questions and the applicant is also available as well.
Thank you, Eddie.
Sure.
Let's go ahead and move into applicant presentation.
Hello, Jeff, my name is an applicant's engineer, designer of the project. Well, thank you guys for your time here. Obviously, this is town on the site and we've. Been, been part of our trying to develop a plan that's used for this site. We've already gone in front of the Hamilton County, I don't know, the Cleveland County. Thirty more, obviously convince them that our, that our plan fit well, then they recommended us for approval. Um, had a couple of meetings with your zoning department and um. Was obviously able to convince them that that was a good fit as well. We got unanimous. Recommendation for approval there and now, now I guess it's my, my, my next turn is with you guys, so. Um, here, I, I know that, uh, understand that staff has some concerns with the project, but hopefully we can uh. Get through, get through this and uh, make you guys comfortable. Um, and I appreciate staff's hard work on this, but there are a couple of items that I think we interpret the code differently, so. Hopefully, I think the easiest way to kind of walk through this was kind of e- each of staff's comments and I'm just going to kind of go point by point and. Hopefully just walk you guys through, through all of that. Um, I will mention, and I'm assuming this is Assistant Chief Watkins.
Yeah.
So we've, we've been working, trading a bunch of emails back and forth. Your, your fire department or some busy gentleman over there, so. Um, we've traded many emails and phone calls, but you might see some of the, the, the fire stuff kind of worked out live and live in action because uh. He, he's been unavailable the last couple of days, so we, we said that we would discuss it tonight in front of you guys, so. Um, just wanted to give you guys the heads up and um. I will proceed forward, so I'm just going to kind of go through it. So the first couple of kind of breeze through, these were basically the uh. County's comments when we went through it and kind of their conditions, so um, the, the county. Wanted us to conform to article um, seven point seven four of the P U D standards. Um, we believe the P U D plans meets all the requirements of that article. So on to comment number two, this was one of Eddie's comments, this was presented um, at the, at the last meeting. And presented to staff. Said, add a detailed cross section within the project. Type listed for the proposed hiking trail, all portions of the hiking trail are to be located in open space. Um, this cross section was presented in the last planning and zoning meeting. Um, here is the cross section that shows the hiking trail. Um, majority of that trail is, is a mulch trail in the woods. Um, this helps prevent impervious runoff, helps with the rainwater as opposed to, you know, a, a hard surface. Um, and the trail will be hard surface where it connects between the lots and the, the multi-use trail. Um, comment three, um, this is all dedicated open space, a total of at least thirty five percent of the proposed site. And be designed to accommodate at least five percent of active open space. Um, and detailed for proposed active amenities. Old plan, when we went to the planning commission, um, we had thirty seven percent, thirty seven point three percent open space and six point eight percent. Open space, since then, you guys got an updated plan based on their recommendations. They wanted to get rid of two of the flag lots back there and reconfigure that walking trail to make it more interconnected. Um, and not necessarily go down the, uh, around the slope. So with the removal of lots twenty nine and twenty four on the old plan, we now have forty percent um, active open space. And we're down the, the required five percent for the uh, active open space. Um, and that, that reduction in active open space, like I said, was at the recommendation of the planning and zoning. That they wanted us to reduce the trail size, so that is why that went down. Um, comment four, all easements will be required to be dedicated on the record plat. And shall state any conditions or restrictions of said easements. And shall state any conditions or restrictions of said easements. Um, basically, there's two two very challenging overhead electric um easements that go through the site. Um, very challenging site, lots of, you know, topography, um slopes, trees. And and these big easements. Um, so one of their requirements was that on that final plaque. We, you know, we record these easements and we record um. So anyone that's buying a lot knows what they're buying, where the easements are, what those restrictions are. That'll be plotted and. Relayed to anyone that would be purchasing one of those lots. Uh, comment number five, uh wetland assessment and determination must be completed. Um, we've had the wetland uh assessment completed. Uh, by Ramble and Associates. Um, it's been provided to staff. Um, we'll get into some of those more detailed. There there's one particular uh farm pond on the site that I I think staff and the the design team kind of um. Feel differently about. Um, I've got some more input from the wetland scientists um. Tonight before the meeting, he sent me an email which I'm happy to share for you when we get further along in the presentation. Um, comment five, uh, four oh one, four oh one, four oh four E P A permit will be needed to be obtained. Um, we we obviously know this as as indicated, we had a preliminary wetland and stream. Assessment of the site. Um, the there there's two two regulated streams on the site. Um, which you'll see later on, show where those are located. We're we're avoiding those streams, so we're not touching them. I'm staying out of all the regulated streams. And there's this one isolated freshwater pond with with wet wind fringe. Um, it was identified as point one eight acres, so it's a very small little farm pond um on a site. Um, it was observed um. That that there's no on-site connection to any streams or other waters in the U S, therefore being an isolated um pond. Uh, that the preliminary assessment from the wetland scientists is that is is not irregular by the U S Army Corps of Engineers. And I got further information on that pond, like I said, as I get further along. Um, on number six, stormwater basins are are required to be located within open space lots. Not um in in building lots. The the last go around on the plant set, the lots were moved around, so. The new stormwater basin is entirely on its own separate lot. Um, it is not on a a lot that a resident would own, so. It would be owned and maintained by that H O A. Um, and then number eight is to remove all existing structures on the site. Um, and we we comply with that. So. That's kind of a freeze through of what the what the county wanted. Um, and like I said, I think we've addressed. Um, all all their regulations uh in the in the plan set in front of you. Um, now now we'll get into the the more challenging um po- part of the uh presentation here. And like I said, I I think. You know, uh, the way that staff is reading the regulations and the way that um our our design team and our legal counsel uh. Reads the regulations, we have some varied opinions. So um, the the first thing is um. That we want to provide a variety of housing and lot sizes for both uh the planning of the development and more sensitive. More sensitive to the protection of natural resources on the sites by clustering the housing. In areas physically suited to accommodate developments and preserving the resources in open space. But that's one of the objectives that's that's pointed out in in the P U D uh zoning. And number ten is. Uh, we want to respect the balance between building mass and volume and vegetation mass and volume by considering scale relationships. Between new developments and existing buildings and lands. Um, so the lot size of note, Eddie's comment is the lot sizes and open space are not varied. Nor designed in an effort to accommodate resource protection and avoidance of hillside significant grading as shown in the hillsides. The design is conventional and fails to meet cluster lots, resulting in grading and inclusions into the trees and hills. As well as the elimination of the ponds in the center of the site. Um, at least nine lots encroached. Um, on the tree lines and hillsides. Um, we don't argue that the that we encroach. Um, into those tree lines or those hill sides, but there's certain regulations in those P U D of how much. Trees you can disturb, what kind of trees you can stir disturb, what slopes you can disturb and 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 how much of each of those slopes you can so just. To serve. Um, we we believe that we meet all those requirements. Obviously, if we were coming i- in this area. And we weren't allowed to touch any tree lines or touch any slopes, we'd probably all have no place to live in in this general area. So um, but I gotta, would we say why is the staff's opinion that the lot sizes in open state spaces are not varied? Were designed in an effort to accommodate um resource protection and avoid its hillside. The design team believes that they that was the exact approach that was taken when we laid out this development. There are only two blocks on the entire development that have the same area and dimensions. All of the other lots have different sizes, shapes and patterns. Um, this was done in an effort to. Accommodate resource protection and avoid hill hillside as much as possible. Um, this is a very small development. Um, a house of dark clusters, it might not look like they're. The cluster because on a on a bigger, you know, fifty acre development or whatever, you would see where there's kind of lots follow the 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 ridge line. Um, we we are following that ridge line, but with it being such a small development, we only have one ridge line to kind of follow. So all of those houses are. Are are put up on the ridge line to avoid um the 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 trees on the site and to um protect the slopes. Uh, what what the staff believes is a conventional layout just happens to be the most appropriate way. To lay out the development with the with electrical easements, the slopes, the regulated streams and the trees to be preserved. The P U D regulations are very specific um guidelines on what resources need to be protected and how they need to be protected. The P U D reduces the amount of grading. The P U D reduces the amount of grading that is allowed on slopes and into tree lines. It does not eliminate it completely. It it regulates um a very specific requirements. The P U D uh resources, the P U D requires that you protect the streams, wetlands. And waters of the U S by getting the necessary permits for the regulated waters and wetlands if they're destroyed. The wetland stream expert hired to do the site evaluation does not believe the pond on this site is regulated, is a regulated pond. And for a high value natural resource that needs to be protected. That's very important and will that that'll come up many times um throughout this. Like I said, I got more info from about the streamers. This is the exact requirements that are required by the P U D for protecting. For protecting um the different natural res- resources. Um, for flood flood plains, you're not allowed to touch them. Uh, we don't have any flood plains on the site, so not 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 applicable to uh art development. You have the the wetlands. Um, it says for any wetlands, um, you're subject to the U S Army Corps of Engineers and Ohio E P A. Requirements. Um, we we will follow all regulations as. As necessary. Like I said, we went out of our way to avoid the regulated streams that the stream consultant found. And he does not believe that that small pond is regulated at all. Um, unstable slopes. So these are all the slopes on the s- site that slope between twenty five and fifty percent. The P U D requires that you protect ninety percent of these slopes. We are protecting ninety five point four percent of those slopes. With steep slopes that are steeper than uh thirty percent. You're required to pro- protect eighty five percent of those. We are protecting ninety four point one percent of those. Um, it's steep slopes between twenty and thirty percent. You need to protect seventy percent of them. We are protecting eighty two point four percent of those slopes. Um, there is no young woodland um growth on the site. Um, there is mid-growth woodlands on that site. There's forty percent um mid-growth woodlands. We're protecting over double. The amount of trees that we need to protect in this category. We're protecting eighty five point five percent of all those trees. Uh, and I know he's worried about us going in the tree line, but I I I'm proud that we were able to protect as many trees as we did and 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 we're more than doubling. The requirements um listed in the P U D. Um, and finally, it's the mature woodlands. Um, they require fifty percent of that to be protected. And we're protecting sixty one point one percent um of of those woodlands. So um, as the P U D um. Requirements and standards are laid out, um, we believe that we meet all resource protection requirements. Um, as far as, you know, grading on slopes and grading in any treatment. Um, here is a general layout um showing um the the. The oh, the the trees, well, basically the open space, the green would be the open space, the darker green um. Uh, trail that winds around there. That is the active open space trail. Um, and obviously the the. The lots are shown on there. Um, I think this is a good kind of depiction of um. How we avoided the slopes. So that that kind of the black lines are 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 roads and are cul-de-sacs. Um, and obviously, this is a generalized figure, but it's pretty close to what we got there. We'll we'll get the more end. And those blue lines that are highlighted there, those are the protected streams. So as you can see, um, from our design. We're staying out of the streams, the regulated streams, and we followed the the ridge line and the plateau. To avoid as much slopes um as as possible. Um, this is a figure um showing, this shows the open space, um, the easements. So. Uh, unfortunately, your code doesn't allow any of those easements to be counted as open space. Um, so that there's green, that there's green lines going through there, they're always going to be grass. Um, they can't build in them. They're they're not allowed to be built in. So you really have even more open space than's calculated. It's just. Your regulation doesn't allow us to to count any of that stuff under that easement as um open space. Um, but this is also a great illustration of, I know one of um their comments was that, that, you know. The size of the lots and and they're, you know, they're all the same size and um not different shapes or whatever. But you can see that, like I said, there's only two lots over there by that trail. They're the same size. All the rest of them are different whips, whis. Different depths, um, different shapes. And they were basically laid out to exactly follow that ridge line. So we did not disturb, um, we disturbed the minimum amount of trees and slopes as possible. This is a highlight. This map shows the the slopes that need to be protected. Each different color. Um, is a different type of slope and that red line is kind of our our limits of our grading. So as you can see, uh, besides the pond that we need to kind of get down low so we can get all the water to it. I mean, besides where there's a little drawl or something, we we did our. A a very good job of staying in the white and out of disturbing those slopes. This is the trees, um, a different type of trees. You got the the mature and the uh. The mature and the mid-growth, um, same thing. And and you can see, uh, our our red lines are grading boundary. We we did the best we possibly can in in to to stay out of touching as as much of those trees as as possible. Um, land service must be minimal. This is staff's comment. Land service must be minimized and should be delineated. For a site with a profile of a steep slope. It is advisable to implement the land service to the contours of the plateau, avoiding the steep declines following the tree line and remaining. On that open plateau. Steep slopes twenty to thirty percent plus are typical and can be seen on the densely contour. My red, which I don't think, I I don't know if that was in a different page anywhere. It wasn't underneath this comment, but. Um, generally speaking, we'll we'll get through this. Um, cluster development is an alternative option to the P U D. Um, or other conventional approach. Once again, you think the design team has, well, the 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 design team has searched the entire piece. Pouch of zoning code and the current subdivision requirements, and we cannot find the requirements above that indicate land service must be minimized. Have to follow the tree line and remain on the open plate. With that said, we believe the planned development submitted. Follows the general principles listed above. The roads and houses are placed in a manner to avoid the trees. And stay off the slopes as much as possible. It would be nearly impossible to develop the site or any other site in this area. If all tree lines could not be disturbed and every house had to remain on an open platform. We believe this is why the P U D regulations give the very specific guidance on how much of each tree type and slope can be disturbed. Um, it is the goal of the developer to preserve as many trees as possible. And to reduce the grading on the slopes as much as possible. This is the entire reason that the developer has seeked the 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 P U D. Um, if if they went for the uh, P U D allows for the smaller smaller lot. Figured easier to follow the tree lines, follows the slopes, follow those two large easements on the property. Um, if the P U D is denied and the site is developed under the underlying S F R zoning. The lots will need to be larger. The houses will get larger. There will be the need for more grading and more infrastructure. And it would be expected that there would be more disturbance of the trees and slopes. S F R zoning. Um, does not have the resource protection requirements that the P U D's having does. So they don't have the the the. Requirements in there to necessarily protect these slopes to save this amount of trees to so um. Why it's more stringent for us to follow these regulations, we think that the smaller lots, we can fit them around the top of that slope better and. Can figure them in a manner to save as many trees and to save a- as much slope as possible. Um. The, as far as constructing on the the slopes, the client has paid and obtained a very deep. Detailed geotechnical report um that specifically indicates how any soils on these slopes that are encountered. Should be constructed. So they went out, they drilled soil tests, they drilled down, they figured out the specific soils. Um, in many different areas on the site and we we got recommendations for when we do encounter these slopes. Exactly how to to handle that instruction um on those slopes. Um, the the design team uh does not see in the person's town to zone code for cluster development. Um, I'm assuming they're referring to the conservation subdivisions that.
Eddie.
Yeah, I thought I was going to.
Yep, sorry. Because but if it is the conservation um subdivision, we we looked at that. Um, we we looked at trying to to fit in the requirements of that. Um, and and we just don't believe that that's the best fit. We we believe that the. P U D um requirements um are a better fit um for the the housing development that. That um to go on a s- specific piece of land with with all the easements and slopes and um waters. This is just a general uh layout. This would be um, and and this isn't perfect. This is our first pass that we have to go through, but. This basically is a general idea of what an S F R. So if we went, if we didn't get the P U D approval, we went to build. Um, with with the single family residential zoning, that's the underlying zoning. That wouldn't come to this board. It wouldn't go. It would just go straight to the county and as long as we met all those requirements. That we would be approved to to build something similar to this. Um. Once again, just real quick, this table will keep coming up many times and just and and I'll go fast through it, but just to reiterate, we. Meet all the requirements for protecting slopes, protecting t- trees, protecting wetlands. Um. The architecture lacks substantive variety of massive design and character design. Um. Designs lack in particular character or theme. Um. And and we apologize that the staff doesn't necessarily like um the architect's sample plans that were sent over. Um, but um, we don't see uh where meeting the staff's preference on architectural design as part of any of these requirements. Um, applicants sent over nine sample plans of houses uh per staff's request. Um, the plans sent in are samples or. Um the plans sent in are samples or representatives of similar homes that may be built um on the development. The actual architecture and design will be determined by the homeowner. Who who makes those determinations when working with the builder um building the homes. So um if the the staff or if the staff or the trustee wishes to limit certain types of homes. Building materials, roofing types, et cetera, our developer is open uh to listening to your options. Some of those often are, you know, brick fronts or half-brick, uh you know, certain types of roofs. Um we're we're happy to uh incorporate those requirements into the H O A documents. Um. Um. But with that said, obviously, the the developer would like to make as many um. Would would like to be as flexible as possible and let the homeowners make as many decisions as possible when building their home. You know, they want, they want to them to be proud of their home and and to be as flexible and and give the homeowner what they're what they're looking for. When built, building a house. Um obviously, it's impossible for uh my client to know what the staff's architectural taste is. When determining what the character of a home is. Um the code requires, a- and and we have those nine samples um uh uh that we sent in, like I said, they're just that, they're samples. At the end of this presentation, if you guys want to see them, um I have them on the computer, we can, we can pop them up for you. Um the code requires P U D development, um respect the balance between building mass for value. And vegetation mass body, not necessarily the 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 building size. When when the code's talking about it, it's the mass of how many buildings they are versus the vegetation body. Um and obviously, the P U D code um. Puts open space requirements, true credit rating requirements and landscape requirements into the P U D guide. And code to ensure that you meet these um. You respect the balances between the mass and houses and the massive vegetation. Um. So that's that's kind of with the with the codes and patterns, but even um. But at Eddie's point, um with massing the different sizes um and characters of homes. Um while we don't believe that this is a requirement of the P U D code. Um. Different massing and architectural variety or character would likely to happen on this site. Um because of the way the site's laid out um. There's, there's, a- as I showed before, um due to the site having many different sized buildable areas. And different shaped lots, by that nature, you're going to get different shaped houses and and different sized houses and different architecture. Once again, this is that that kind of that document showing all the different sized lots um and. And and buildable areas, so you can kind of see the the variation of the the size and shapes of houses that can be built. Um. The amenities are lacking and are defactored replacement of the side road requirements. Um that this one was kind of a a little bit shocking to to the team um. That that the client and myself had had a a Zoom meeting with the staff on January twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Um it was in this meeting that the staff recommended um placing the walk-on-use path. On one side of the road in lieu of sidewalks on both sides of the road and connecting it to the walking trail. So when when we kind of got this comment that that um we we were trying to. Not put sidewalks in, we were kind of shocked because kind of wasn't our identity first. But and there's the email um from a staff um. Uh shortly after that meeting, um sending sending the correspondence to Eddie that we've added the uh. The 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 trail as requested um to to the plants. Um. The client indicated, and uh above and beyond that, the client indicated in the last planning and zoning meeting. Um with the planning department that um he was more than willing to eliminate the multi-use path. And trail system and place sidewalks on be- both sides of the road, if that's your guy's preference. Uh we could then utilize the two lots that were that that were given up. Um that that the planning and zoning really wanted to keep those lots from disturbing the vegetation that was there. So they were, they liked the idea of having the multi-use trail. Um eliminating some impervious area to reduce rain uh rainwater runoff by not having sidewalks on both sides of the street. And um to per their recommendations, we kind of reconfigured that trail and kind of made it more um. More user-friendly based on what the planning and zoning um board uh recommendations gave us. So uh these are the next objectives, um staff feels that the site fails to comply with the P U D objectives. Um says preserve open space to reduce erosion, improve water quality, provide wi- wildlife habitats. Retain scenic views and reduce stormwater runoff um. The other objective is preserve areas with steep terrains by representing topography and other natural features in the development plan. And maintain a significant percentage of land in open spaces and wooded areas and slopes. Um this is our favorite table, here it is again, um we meet all the requirements. Uh uh ab- above and beyond in in most cases, like I said, especially in that that woodland category, we're we're over-doubled protecting that. Um as well as the most of those slopes were were above and beyond what is uh required. So we feel like we we meet the objectives and we feel like they're clearly spelled out in the P U D uh zoning code. Um so there is a one, one point eight freshwater pond habitat classified as P U D. Um the pond was, this pond was uh. Reviewed by an environmental professional from Rambo that specializes in saving natural resources. Um his response, he sent a uh response to card or to Cardinal. Um I'll show that response in the in the in the later slide. Um to leave nine lots that encroach. So at least nine lots that encroach on the hillside, um we don't argue that we encroach um into the tree line. But we encroached the amount that we're allowed to, well, significantly less than the amount that we're uh allowed them. Um based on the downstream impacts, both impervious surfaces should be limited. And onsite collection capacity should be above the minimum standard, um unless cons- uh. Unless increased conservation steps are taken, the site sits on a plateau and has. Uh proposed conventional stormwater techniques with no regards for creative approaches. Um here's, here is the uh email from the wetland scientist, you just sent this to me um. Well, before the meeting, uh P U G, P U B G H is defined by the U S Fish and Wildlife Service. On the Natural Wetland Inventory Max as uh who, forgive me, I'm not a, not a wetlands guy or soils guy here. But uh coolest stream, uh unconsolidated bottom, intermittently exposed. Dieter impounded area, this type of resource is very common and in most cases refers to a constructed farm pond. The P U, P U B G I feature at this site is indeed a small, low-quality farm pond. Constructed in uplands and surrounded by agricultural fields, onsite pond is shallow and hydraulically isolated. Based on Rambo's experience, the feature is not jurisdictional under section four oh four, four oh one of the Green Water Act. Nor subject to Ohio EPA's isolated wetland program. Um as far as P U D objective four, the pond is situated near the top of a hill. And minimal surface runoff impact. Punctually, the pond provides little to no ecological benefits as it relates to any of the. Erosion, erosion reduction, water quality improvements due to the hydraulically isolated condition. Wildlife habitat, given its habitat setting with an agro- agricultural field. And lack of any unique or rare habitat characteristics. Small farm ponds like this are commonplace and awful minimal scenic value. Stormwater runoff reduction will be provided by new stormwater basins planned for the community. P U D objective five, uh not applicable in the uh. The Natural Resource Protection Experts' um opinion. Uh removal of point one acre farm pond has no effect on preservation of areas with steep terrain. Or other natural features. P U I, P U D objective ten, the farm pond is open water habitat with minimal fringe vegetation present. Similar characteristics will be provided by constructed stormwater basins for this project. No net loss of vegetation mass body. Um that was sent by Mike Woll Gary, I'm the senior project manager for Ram. He's the one that walked the site and did the 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 uh initial investigation. Uh so staff comments, based on the downstream impacts, both impervious surfaces should be limited. Um and onsite collection capacity should be above the minimum standard unless increased conservation steps are taken. Um the site sits on a plateau and has has proved, has proposed conventional stormwater techniques. With no regard for creative approaches. Um the impervious surface was re- was reduced by going above and beyond the requirements. For not disturbing trees and removing and removing the sidewalks on one side of the street. All of the requi- requirements of this article, all of the requirements. Of articles of the Claremont County Stormwater Management Sediment Control Regulations are met for this site. Drainage calculation by default, take into account the ground cover and the topography of the site. The more impervious surface you have on the site, the larger this, the larger the basin needs to be to to hold back. Uh the runoff from from the impervious surface, um same goes with steep slopes. Um part of those calculations is a is a mechanism called time of concentration. The faster the the water gets to the detention pond, the bigger the pond has to be. Every one of these um scenarios was taken into account when we when we sized this punch. We put in a detention pond um that is larger um than than what it's called for um by the regulations. Um here is a table, I'm showing that the release rates of the the pond. Prior to development and post-development, so these are different storm events in one year, the two-year, the five-year, the ten-year, twenty-five, the fifty, and a hundred year. You can see that the on on all of these storm events, we are significantly, significantly letting off less water. Um than what previously was left, and the regulation allows you to let up to. The same amount of water runoff o- off the site. So as you can see on all of them, we're we're significantly reducing that, which means our pond is bigger than it needs to be. We can make that pond smaller to make these numbers closer to what the the pre-development rates. Uh while I appreciate the staff uh wanting to be creative. Um the stormwater regulations and runoff reduction on the site are above and beyond what is required by the Claremont County Storm. Uh water regulations, uh being the engineer that has to stamp and sign the calculations and I'm ultimately responsible. For any downstream flooding, um I feel more comfortable using the conventional proven approaches. To stop downstream flooding and runoff issues, the conventional approach is clearly laid out in the regulations. We have provided extra storage capacity in the basins to go above and beyond the stormwater requirements. Um I'd rather let some other engineers try their creative and unproven approaches um. Until those become more conventional, I'll let those guys be the getting bit um before I start, you know, putting people um. Uh downstream of of my designs um in possible danger of. By by trying creative and un- unproven stormwater uh techniques. Um with that said, um in addition to adding the extra storage capacities in the basin, my client has offered um. Several other B M Ps what's um at Eddie alluded to earlier that that, you know. We we could go above and beyond it and we're we're volunteering these these above and beyond measures. Um one of it is uh is making a requirement of the develop developer to install an energy. Energy dissipator on the outlet of the detention pond, I I know one of the major concerns is erosion downstream. Um erosion is usually caused by the velocity of the water and how fast the water is coming out of that pond. An energy dissipator puts a bunch of big blocks and stones and stuff, so when that water comes out, it crushes it and slows that water down. Before it goes down down the slope. Um the others, the other thing um we've recommended is um. We we can make it part of the H O A requirement that each homeowner install a rain barrel. Um a rain barrel collects runoff from your roof, um it stores it and allows the homeowners to use this um. In the uh to water their plants and and for other uses instead of it just going down downstream. Um and I believe that's, you you have a, I think Claremont County has a rain barrel program, do they not, Eddie? Yes, so so there there there's already kind of a program set up in Claremont County to do that, I believe they even. They give you the free, free rain barrel. Um another option, this one might be a little bit um harder to to get past. Because we we need the uh county to to allow allow it um. Um but our our client's willing to pay for it, um install bio swales in the right way on the side of the street. Where we don't have the sidewalk or multi-use trail, so since we only have the multi-use trail on one side. We could put a bio swales on the other side where you'd normally see a sidewalk. Um the bio swales have plants in them and collect water, um suck up the water, clean the water up. And then we could connect those bio swales into the storm sewer system that we've already designed to um. Eventually get downstream and and act for all the water that didn't get absorbed. Um and the final thing is um. We're willing to make it a requirement to upsize each storm sewer pipe. Um one size to create extra storage during large storm events, so um there's a certain requirement of. What size storm pipes we we could put in, um one suggestion would be if we made these pipes. One size larger, you're getting extra storage, extra capacity, it would slow down um the the downstream water. So um objective none, provide a higher level of design review to ensure attractive well-planned communities. And eliminate the barriers to creative and sensitive design that may exist. When attempted to comply with conventional district standards.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm curious, how many objectives are there? Just, I'm just still curious.
There, sir, I think it's like fourteen, isn't it?
Okay, no worries, I'm just, it's a lot to take in, from my perspective, a lot of information. I reviewed it before the meeting, of course, and tried to try to be as prepared as possible. No, carry on, just curious.
So um you know, there there's high tension lines um on the site, there's easements. We're not denying that, there's nothing we can do about it, we we can't go down and knock them down. Duke's there, those easements are going to be there forever um on this land, so um. But and and we realize that some of these lots, you're not going to be able to build an accessory structure. So um that basically I'll try and summarize Eddie's comment, but he's basically, I'll try and speed things up here because there are a lot.
Okay, just, you know, I'm trying to, trying to absorb as much as I can, and the well is only so big, and this noggin, you know, unfortunately.
So um. We we understand that some of the backyards are not going to be able to build accessory structures. We're aware of that, we're going to tell the people building the lots that um. You know, and some people might look at that as a benefit, they, their neighbors not going to have cruddy old sheds sitting out in their backyard. So some people would like that because they'll know they'll have a nice grass backyard eternity, so um. The 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 can't really build, so the required setbacks are marked on the plans and the buildable areas are clearly shown. This comment has already been addressed um for the county and all easements and conditions will be restated on the record plaque. When recorded as requested. Um we concur that there are some lots that will not have the ability to build accessory structures. Um clearly be advertised to the homeowners, the homeowner will know that going in. Um we believe it does. Um, we believe it is not up to staff um to decide if a potential homeowner wants to buy a lot. Where an accessory structure can be built. Um, this is up to, to the homeowner. Uh, since his only hope is not allowed for easements to be used as open space, um, as part of the P U D requirement. Easements aren't allowed to be considered open space. That the best use of these areas is for backyards or side yards. I don't. If you guys got any other better ideas, we're all ears. Um, but this is kinda to uh summarize. Eddie was saying we didn't talk to Duke, this is the email from Duke, um, he, he just got in touch with us here in the last couple of days. Um, an email's hard to read, so I blew it up for you. Um, there's five, five general um conditions to follow. Um, grading is not permitted within tw- twenty-five feet of the Duke uh energy structure pole. Uh, greater closer than, closer than twenty-five feet from the Duke transmissions for the facilities are. Uh, potential to cause instability um. Duke requires slopes that are greater than four to one within transmission easements, it doesn't allow steeper slopes. Retaining walls, um intersections, driveway entrances, um parallel streets or roads. Um, traffic signs, signals, hazards, instructions are not permitted in the Duke energy easements. It doesn't prevent us, um road streets, drives, entrances within close proximity to the transmission poles. Create hazards for workers. Um, so, there's really only one lot that all of, all, all of these regulations affect. Um, that is lot thirty-two. Um, and we, we're, we have a, a solution um to, I, I think the plans that you have were submitted before we got this response back from Duke. But we've talked with Duke and um if you see those blue contours on there. Um, we can, we can wrap those contours around this pole to eliminate coming within twenty-five feet. And doing any grading um. Basically following Duke's requirements, so um our, our plan would. Change a little bit on lot thirty-two and we would avoid grading um. Within twenty-five feet of uh their structure. Um, the other lot, um Eddie is further away than twenty-five feet, so. Only lot effective thirty-two, um and we, we, we propose in our final development plan to, to put in these grades. Um, and not touch um the, the, the structure, meeting all. Duke's requirements um. The site fails to comply with P U D district purpose statement for residential uses. For residential uses within a P U D, the objective is to encourage the creation of neighborhoods with a variety of housing types. Natural resources, provide adequate landscaping and open areas and are compatible with the characteristics of the joint lands. P U D waiver granted, reduce residential lot area where dwellings for footage minimums. Um, should be applied only when applicable to demonstrate overall development as higher quality beyond. So, not to beat a dead horse, but here's our table again, we feel like we meet all the requirements above and beyond. Those are the requirements. Um, we're there. Um, once again, we believe that we offer many different um lot sizes um. To the neighborhood, the development follows the plateau. Um, it's on top of the slopes, we save as many trees as possible. We feel like it is a high-quality development, we feel that this P U D development is way better than if we come in here. And we do the single-family residential at-right development that, that we're allowed to do without. And, without coming to the, to the planning commission or, or the board of justice. Um, landscaping outdated and not updated um after alterations. Um, don't disagree with that, but it was discussed at the last planning and zoning meeting. Um, with, with planning and zoning staff that um the developer did not want to um. Be required to plant trees that the homeowners may not want. Um, obviously, we don't wanna go in and, and have a landscape plan and, and plan all these landscaping for people that are building these houses. We proposed a better, a better approach was the developer uh wants to allow then homeowners to do their own landscape design. But to make it a requirement of the H O A that on all lots landscaping is compliant with section three oh four. Um, but with section three oh four of the P U D requirement. So, that, that would give each homeowner what, what they could plant and wear, but we wanna let them plant their own, own trees. So, this would be a requ- a, a requirement, uh i- if you were to, to approve it, you could put that requirement in there and say. Um, this is a requirement that needs to go into that H O A. Uh, so now this, this gets in the. It will beat you to death with traffic stuff here, so, but, but we're almost to the end, so. So, uh based on general discussion with Amanda Biden regarding the Davis nine mile intersection. Um, it's, staffs understand that there are geo-nitrate issues with intersection. And adjacent areas within intersection does not comply with Claremont County um standards. Um, we don't disagree with that, but the rest of Amanda's email said. While the intersection is not ideal, it seems to be functioning efficiently and, and there is no need for improvements. Per, per the discussion with um Amanda. Um, she go, she went on to say that the um, there's many intersections uh in Pierce Township and in the county. That are, that don't meet the geometric requirements of today's standards, because they were built before those standards were in place. Um, and, and I basically just summarized what I, what I said there, so um. Maybe the intersection is working well um.
I don't think she said it's working well, she said it's working efficiently, two different goals.
Okay, efficient, well, we'll get into, we have, and safe, safely.
We will.
Okay, safe. Um, site fails. Better for future land use. The site fails to comply with underlying proposed future land use. Significant topographic issues are presented and applicants' design directly impacts tree line. Steep hillsides as well as um, getting back to kind of beat the dead horse there. We meet all the requirements for saving the trees, we meet all the requirements for the.
Show me the chart one more time.
I'm trying to spare you, but.
We can go back to it.
Yeah, I miss it, guys.
We can scroll back, but maybe, and then we can just pick up where we left off.
We're gonna see if you can get back to where you were.
We can, but our meetings are usually much longer. This is actually gonna be a short meeting.
I'm just trying to.
No, you're fine, I'm just saying, this is, this is good.
We have sleeping bags back here, so we're good, we're good together.
The land use plan calls for uh, he says the plan is inconsistent with the land use plan. The land use plan calls for single-family homes, that's exactly what we're, we're proposing here. I don't see how we're inconsistent with that. Um. The steep slopes, uh let's see, conventional residential recommend density of two units per acre in areas where steep slopes. Are not an issue, um in cases where steep slopes are concerned, the steep slopes must be preserved. Uh, steep slopes, however, are an issue, this is Eddie was going with it. So, once again, applicant meets all the required uh conditions for slopes. Um, and, and for um the underlying uh density, we meet all the density requirements. African is asking for a smaller lot of. The jointy lots in adjacent neighborhoods tend to be larger than this. Um, we don't argue that, and we're asking for the smaller lots to meet the objective of saving as many trees as possible and saving as many slopes as possible. Um, site fails to subsequently attempt to achieve the spirit and attempt of the P U D land use. Plan is a thing. Plan in attempting higher quality developments. Um, we believe that this is a much higher quality development, we think it's a well-laid out development, protecting slopes. Natural resources, um and that this is a way better development than if we come in and we do the underlyingness of our zones. This is improved. Um, the developer meets every one of the P U D requirements um for resource protection. Um, nu- numerous impediments are not incorporated. Um, but it appears little or no effort has been made to avoid these impediments. Every effort's been made to avoid them, I just showed you how we plan to avoid the tower there. Um, unfortunately, as I said, just pointing out here. Your P U D code doesn't allow us to make easements open space. Um, besides a yard, we're all up for other options. Wish we could make the power line zip lines, or we could make the, the towers climbing towers, but unfortunately Duke's not gonna go for that, so. Um, we think that the best use of that land is, is, is yours. Site is proposed along an intersecting roadway with. Part, this is getting into more, more traffic stuff, um. The site is misaligned with Michael Drive, the staff remain in concern with the sufficiently. Sufficiently of nine mile where particularly at intersection with Davis Kerr Bacon, O K I nine mile road. Has approximately four, four hundred sixty-nine thousand eighty-two credit per one hundred million, million vehicles. So, they extend that out, you don't have a hundred million vehicles going up and down that. They just do that so you can kind of compare data with roads that um. Expressways and the other roads that have many vehicles going, going on. Um. Now we're talking about that, um, so. The Claremont County Traffic Engineers and Cardinals Traffic Engineers have reviewed this intersection. Um, and um we believe it is not. Claremont County and Cardinals Engineers do not believe that the intersection is not sufficient or is unsafe in the current configuration. Um, that, that's both, uh, uh, Amanda doesn't believe that it's unsafe and we had our own in-house traffic people look at it.
I know that she said that it was safe, I don't think she said that, I think she said it's functional.
But we'll get into all the crash, I, I got all the crash data, um, we're, 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 we're getting there. I know you guys are, are excited to.
There we are, we can't wait. So, so you have a, a fair amount, uh, so, so what, what the crash, the crash data, you had your own engineer. Analyze some of that, because I didn't see that.
It, it's available data, but, but we, you can get on the, the website and it has crash information for all the. All the crash data for each intersection, you know, through O-Dot, so we'll.
Okay, I'll let you in.
Um, well, the intersection of, we've already talked about that, I'm. Um, her further conversations with the, the Amanda, your guys, Claremont County Traffic Engineers. They do not believe using traffic data from O K I that only gives the total data for the entire nine mile stretch. Of the road is an accurate, is an accurate or prudent way to analyze the safety or efficiency of this intersection. This is expected to prove when specific correct data is available for that particular intersection. Um, per the Claremont County Traffic Engineer's email nine, nine twenty-two. They typically use O-Dots transportation information mapping system to evaluate traffic data, crash trends. And to pull crash reports. This system was utilized to look at the crash info for this intersection, so. Um, that, to answer your question, we, we use T Ims, which is Ohio's system to log on and get every crash that's happened. It goes back five years, so, uh, we got every crash that happened there for the last five. Um, so we, we pulled that, so there are a total of seven cr- crashes. At that intersection over a five-year period. Uh, the type of crash, the quality of crash, the severity of each crash was reviewed for safety concerns. Crash number one, um, the driver ran off the southbound lane of nine mile road and struck the guardrail. The driver was found to be operating vehicle wide and pay. Intersection was not involved in this crash. Basically was, someone had too much to stir.
Can I stipulate? There are crashes there? We're not gonna go through all seven of them, are we?
The, the, real quick.
How about we just stipulate that there were crashes?
Well, I, I, my point being that none of those crashes had to do with the intersection.
Okay, okay, well, let's stipulate this. Under current condition, those crashes happened.
They have.
You're not talking about future condition. You're talking about past condition. What you're asking me for is a P U D change that's going to change current condition to a future condition.
We have information.
Let's jump ahead to there.
Okay, so, well, two, two of those crashes actually involve the intersection, I'll sum. Sum that up.
I will give two points for you on that.
Yes, okay. Trees fell down and all kinds of.
There you go, now you can do the, you can do the gritty on that, you got that.
So, um.
Future condition.
Yep. So, this, uh, that gets to Michael there. But, um, we analyzed what's called the peak hourly rates. So, the peak hourly rates, there is what's called a peak hourly um. A M rate and a peak hourly P M rate, and that's what's used to um determine traffic data. Um, we fed those, those information, uh, our information to both Amanda. Um, at Claremont County Engineers and or um engineer. Um, both of them, um, the, the Ohio code requires to even begin to look at. It affecting an intersection, you need a hundred peak hourly trips. Or, or we're not close to, I think we were at like nine or nine uh, nine peak hourly trips. So, that, dur- during that peak hour, you might have mi- nine or vehicles at that intersection, which they don't foresee any issues.
So, so you're gonna get just nine additional trips based on forty-three additional homes?
Because of the peak hourly rate, not everyone is leaving at the same time.
But there's fewer. Okay.
So, you're adding nine, nine vehicles on, on your A M peak.
So, I have forty-three new homes, forty-three new families, and only nine of them are getting up to go to work.
At the same exact time. Some people work at eight, some people work at nine, some people leave at seven.
Yeah, potato, potato, aren't we like in the same window?
I don't make those, I don't make the traffic rules and.
You don't make some, but I gotta live with.
So, wh- well, we'll be sure in the morning, it's eight, it's, I see eight, this is actually one less than what you said, as far as the report I see. Uh, but twenty-four exits, and then uh in the evening, there's twenty-seven entrances. The entrances goes up in the evening, so you're taking the lesser of the two, there's more people leaving.
Right.
In the morning.
And, but not all of those people are coming to that intersection, they're coming from both ways.
Yeah, I got you, I, I understand, but that there's exits of twenty-four and then entrances of twenty-seven in the evening, just to be sure.
Into, into the development.
Yeah, right, right.
Half, half one way.
But they're coming home at the same time. They're not leaving at the same.
This is within an hour, I believe, of hourly, peak hour adjacent uh street traffic.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't argue that, um, but talking to the, the Claremont County engineer and our engineer, they didn't. None of those numbers, um, A. Brought any, any concern to that, and B, talking with the county, it's the county's intersection, and they're telling me. My developer can't fix the county's intersection, I mean, we're, we're happy to do. You know, we, we have volunteered to donate right away down there to improve the intersection. But that's about the, the extent of what we can do. Um, keep in mind, we're gonna have about the same amount of houses if we go with the se- if we come with a single-family residential development. We're not coming to you guys, we're, there's, how little we're gonna be. Just trying to be.
That's okay, I was just, I just wanted to get the facts, that's okay, you can continue on, it's all right.
No, I'm with you, and, and I understand any of your concerns, but we're kind of in a hard spot here, because it's kind of a fight between the, the township and the, and the county.
Well, essentially what it is, is that you. Sorry, Dr. Chairman. You, you have a county that. Gave you an opinion that doesn't have any impact here, that just gave you an opinion. And they're not going to have to live with any of those impacts. They're not the ones that are sending, sending the fire truck, they're not the ones that's sending the police officers. They're not, you know, dealing with anything on Davis Road, they're just dealing with numbers that they're looking at on a piece of paper. So, that's, and, and your. So that's, and, and your numbers aren't wrong. I'm sure they're very right.
Yeah, and, and generally speaking, you're correct. I mean, there's, there's.
So I don't have a whole lot of respect when you keep saying the county tell, the county told me this or the county told me.
Well, they're.
The county is three, three hundred feet up here and we're down here on the ground.
I understand that they're the traffic engineer for that and it's.
Certainly agree, but.
I, I don't.
You can, you can see my disconnect.
I, I, I completely understand you with that. We're sending the information to who we're supposed to.
And I don't, and I just, I'm just laying that out for you.
Yep.
I don't, I, I respect what you're saying, but I don't respect the, the issue.
Yeah, referring to that over and over again is of very limited, if any, value. I agree with Mr. Freeman. Because we are in fact the ones that are going to have to address more of those local concerns well beyond the county's concerns. So it's not helpful to refer to that over and over again.
Uh, okay, I'll just provide in.
Understood. You know, we're just letting you know. Would you rather know or not know?
No, I'm, I'm fine with that. So one of the other concerns was the site distance. Um, we've gone through, um, the analysis here. I know, um. Eddie wants that intersection to line up directly across from Michael Drive. We wanted to line up directly across from Michael Drive, but we don't own that lot. It's not for sale, so. Unless you guys want an eminent domain, which I'm sure is not, not a case, we cannot line that.
As your legal team will tell you.
Yes, I, I, I'm aware of that. So, um, so we put the intersection wherever we had the, uh. Accurate site design. I won't say that submitted it to someone else, but they.
You can say that, I'm just. But I, I didn't mean, we didn't mean to do that. We just wanted you to know.
So, um, and so that kind of gets through the, kind of the, the presentations and the nuts and bolts. I think that, uh, you know, we kind of went through, uh, all, all Eddie's, um. Reasons here why he thinks it's deficient and we believe that it, it meets those requirements. The only other thing that is kind of still out there is, um. Fire, fire, fire department access, um, and we're going, we're kind of have a live interaction here. Cause we, we've been trying to interact, um, several times over the last two weeks and we've just, um, he's been busy and we've. Tried to design stuff and make everyone happy here, so, um. So there is, ba- basically, if you have over thirty houses. You need two access, there's two access points or. Can have two access points, you can sprinkler the houses. Or you can provide a stub to future development where there will be, in the future, there will be a connection through so they can. Eventually there would be two access points. So, um, provided, um, the, the fire department with several different options. This option right here was what was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission wanted the secondary access located right here. Um, through, remove lot thirty-nine and put the second access point right here. Um, I believe you had some concerns.
So it's section, uh, D one oh seven, I believe. I mean, the exact number of feet, Scott, that, but we sent that in as part of this. Staff working back and forth, but basically the code. Wants two accesses in if you have more than thirty dwelling unit, thirty dwelling units on, uh, off of the single access point. It also has in there that a portion of the language also says that access should be. Uh, greater than fifty percent of diagonal dimension of the space.
Yes.
And that doesn't, and this approach here being that you're only the top, the top one.
It, it meets it. So from, from your service area, so from our back cul-de-sac to our front house. I got that number on there and you can see it, um, is one thousand fifty-two feet. Uh, half of that is five hundred and twenty-six feet, uh, and those two access points are located five hundred and forty-one feet apart. So it would meet the definition for remoteness according to, um, the code.
I believe the code says that the dimension of the property served.
So the areas.
Area served, so if your area was all in that blue area.
That's, there's no houses.
So I'm just, I'm just saying, but I did not do the math, the, the math on it, so. So I don't know. So where you're saying that that dimension there, which you never showed before today.
I, well, I.
At this, at this point, but, uh. Shows that which, which location.
So I, 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 I'm featured in America. I, I just got this stuff, so I'm going to, I got your email this morning, so I'll put this together as fast as I possibly could. So, so we could do exactly this discussing much. But I looked at from the surface area, I obviously looked at where the truck, where the truck would be sitting. Um, and, and all that cul-de-sac through the entrance point there, uh, of the first house. That dimension is one hundred and fifty-two feet, so half of that would be.
Thousand fifty-two.
Oh, I'm sorry, thousand fifty-two feet. Half of that is five hundred and twenty-six feet.
Well, so one, one thing I just would like to know, just, just for like, for the record. Is like these, um, concerns were expressed quite some time ago. I mean, you guys hit ample, ample opportunity to respond to this, right? Or am I, or did you not? I, I just am curious. I don't.
I have not. We, we've been working ha- hand in hand, shared a bunch of emails, shared a bunch of calls. He's been at conferences on vacation. We've, we've, we've been. And, and we've, we've provided several different options. I just got his email this morning back.
Okay.
Um, so I'm just.
I mean, I have no problem discussing it. I'm just curious as to how this.
My question, show me where, I mean, maybe I'm just, it's that app's over there and I'm over there. It's hard to see. Where does the second entrance leave the site and, and join the road?
For that, right there, that's where the planning commission, that, that's where the planning.
Right below Davis.
That is nine.
Okay, so what is that up there?
That is.
Are you talking about that red line at the top? Is that?
You can't really see it very often.
Yeah, I can't see it either.
But it does.
So where there's. And this is a, this is a thing.
Question. How close is that to, to that goofy intersection?
It's right on it. Right, right on it.
Okay, that's not a second entrance.
Yeah, that's a little awkward. That doesn't seem.
Claremont County Planning, so correct.
No.
Those are our guys. That won't work for me. Sorry.
Yes, that was.
You just, I, I, I fear that you just made Davis worse.
Well, it, it just, so everyone's on the same page. That's not a, a, a road for anyone. That road is only for.
Ju- just for the record, just for clarification, the zoning commission was aware that a second access would be required. And so they did not recommend or mandate that that road actually be installed, access road or what have you. They recommend in the specific condition said, please continue to work with the fire department. To find an actual solution to the second access requirement. Or whatever would work in compliance with D one oh seven. It's incumbent upon the applicant to provide these materials, however, in a timely and reasonable manner. So the zoning commission is not in a position to provide engineering consultancy services to the applicant. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Understood.
And I don't disagree. And I've been working, we've sent four different options back and forth, so I'm trying to.
Talking about sightlines, I mean, will that road be open or do you think there's going to be a gate?
Yeah, that was my thought too as well. I mean, if it's an emergency service and you want to.
It's generally if it's going to be an emergency service gate, most of them, most of them are gated. Okay, there's also things that.
So instead of driving two feet more, just from a common sense, practical perspective. Uh, you're going to get out of your truck and open a gate?
Yep.
I mean, what, what sense does that make?
Well, it would make.
I, I don't want you to answer that. I'm sorry. That's not fair.
I mean, the answer to that is simple. It's, and because I'm an idiot and so my answer is that if the first entry point is, is. Clogged or you can't get in that way, you want the second access to be able to get in.
Yeah, and that's where the second acts down.
The second access point is, that's remote. Right.
And I, and I don't.
Up here, this location at the top, being at third, three lots in. Right there where it came out, that's not a remote. I mean, that's what, a hundred and fifty feet?
I, I don't disagree. I'm just.
That's not a remote option. That's why I replied back.
Right.
I even offered over here potentially, I think it's, uh, with this one is thirty-two, maybe, maybe making it come this way to Davis. That might have been an option. I didn't know with the slope, he was going to look into it. Never presented that back. It may not be feasible due to the grid.
We, we did, and it's obvious, so we got other options. That's what we're here to, to talk about, so. So, um.
It's just as you can understand, we can't really see that from here.
The grid?
I can't see much of anything. I don't have that map in front of me, so I can't see that from here. It, it's a purple, it's a purple blob.
So, so beyond this option here, you're going to give us some other ones after this. Okay.
So we'll, we'll speak there. There's others too.
We'll do what you need to do.
So there's. Other option besides providing access to the site now is to stub a road to where there's going to be future development. So there's basically two parcels. You're, you're not building anything to the, the, the south of this town here because of the pottery. It's a, it's a cliff. So basically there are two other parcels that are, are big enough to be developed.
Can you linger on what you just said though about you're not building anything over here because it's a cliff? Can you, can you, I mean, can you clarify that a little bit? Your statement of you're not building anything over here because it's.
So that.
Want that to be.
Beyond, beyond where that.
But that's what you said, right? You're not building anything over here because it's a cliff, right?
It, it's opens, I mean, it's open space. We can't build there anyway.
Right, but I just, but the cliff part, you know, it's, I'm sure it's, you know, not real economically advantageous to build on.
But yeah, we can't build in the open space. And once, once this gets approved, so there's.
Yeah, the ocean, but you got an ice view of nine mile.
So there's, so, so at the end of our cul-de-sac, there's, there's nothing getting built there, I guess. Uh, adjacent to our site, the, the potential for future development would be. The, the, um, yellow one and the green one. I think the yellow one even had people come in that I, I think that their. Application got turned down, but, um, I think. That one and the green one, um, are, are basically the, the two parcels that could be developed. So, um, one of the other exceptions to putting in the. Emergency access road now is to stub it for future connection. And I kind of got those dimensions there too. So if you see the green ones, see those two green lines down there? That is that parcel's access to Davis, I think, takes the turn there. So that's its two entrances to Davis. So you can imagine the connection points between those two developments would be our access point. And one of these green, one of those green points down there, which we just showed that that meets the, the, the requirements. For half the diagonal distance and the other one would be the, um, the, the, the yellow, um. Parcel there, um, and there's really only one spot to, to get access into. So they talked about, one time, I really liked the stub idea because if they developed the yellow parcel next door. They wanted to share access through, um, staff and, um, the, the planning and zoning commission, um. We, we were, we were in there with another applicant with Eddie can inspire.
Yeah, so, uh, interconnectivity is a component that's supported by the land use plan and the P U D. So any, any further exploration of, uh, bona fide interconnectivity with, um, actual public roadways. Is something that's generally, um, it'll help with traffic flow and, uh, provide further through access and also more options for emergency services.
What, what that limits development potential or the types of developments that could occur on those two parcels, that, that stub concept?
Yeah, so, uh, there was a concept that had, that had come before the board at one, or the commission at one point. Uh, however, part of the evaluation would, would be ensuring that it could actually functionally connect next door. So again, just showing it on a map is one thing, but, but then looking at it on ortho imagery and so forth, making sure it doesn't. Go into a water body or something like that would have to be considered.
And Eddie, just to follow, we, we looked at that. So there's two options for, so there's that stream that goes down there. So there's two options basically to stub over to that other, the other. Lot, um, so that would be where I have the highlighted yellow line, um. Here, and then the original design where that red arrow is pointing to.
So you coordinated with the site plan for the yellow parcel. And you determined what the site plan would be for the yellow parcel in order to make sure that the two sites work together.
That was correct, but, but that didn't get, that didn't get approved, but you could.
You utilized.
Yes.
That existing footprint to determine where that road.
Yes, and then you would have two connections between here and where that dog leg was, um, on, on nine mile. We actually talked about at that time sharing, so you, instead of having two intersections right next to each other on Davis. We were just going to have one on Davis and then one on the dog leg of Davis. I mean, ideally. If this development all worked out and everything got developed, you know, ideally you would probably want the, want the connection down here at the bottom of the, the green where it's allowed and up there. And Davis would probably work for the best connectivity, so, but if we stub it, I. If we stub it, that it, that is an exemption from having to put in that other emergency access road. So basically the four options, one you don't like. Option one would be to stub it here where I got the yellow highlighted. Two would be to stub it here up higher. And the reason we chose this spot here. That is the headwater of that stream. So we're, we're having that come through right above where it drops down and there's a stream.
So you got the, the lowest through there.
Yep, the flattest and the, and not, not breaking any rules by this third of the stream. Um, the second access, this was kind of the preferred and what we were looking at when we had, um, a development next door. It's, that's kind of the flattest area of next door, so you could probably get through the best. That lines up pretty good with that dog legs, um, and Davis. Um, the, this was the option with, with planning commission that no one likes. And then the final option is this one way back, um, way back off of nine mile that weaves its way. So here, here's a hundred foot of topography difference, maybe a little bit more between that and Davis Road. So we really got, really got to wind it up there to, to make the, the slope work, that you can get, get a truck up there.
So my question remains, if you were to go with the stub concept, I'm not sure, maybe you explained it. I just didn't understand it. But if you were to go with the stub concept, the top left there, middle left. Um, to the parcel that, uh, where the development was proposed and didn't go through. So in the event that that were approved, that stub concept there, my question was, would that then? There's not a, a, a development proposed for that currently, but would that potentially limit what kind of development went in there, uh, following, you know, this kind of. Plan. I, I meant to ask him. I think, would it hamper it? Would it hamper it?
Well, in an ideal, in an ideal situation, both properties would make an effort to work together. So that there would be some, some sort of agreement, whether written or, or tacit agreement, but.
But at the end of the day, you did base it on an existing footprint.
I know there's a, there's an Amelia Nub, uh, on the end of Sedona Ridge, uh, going to nowhere.
Yeah.
It's currently been used as a four-wheeler. I mean, not, I'm not making necessarily comparison, I'm just saying it's. I mean, it could sit there or whatever. It's, and once you put it in, it's not, there's no current plan to connect it, so there's.
We do it with subdivisions. We, we design subdivisions all the time and stub them for, if there's future and lots, lots of them sit there forever.
But see, that gets to be a problem because we have a stub to nowhere and could remain a stub to nowhere forever. And that doesn't help us with our second access point.
This code and you have, I mean, I don't know when you adopted this code, but Eddie, I can email this to you, but I, I. I, I just, the guy just emailed it to me. He's working in my office, but he went around the surrounding areas and picked. Fifteen or twenty other subdivisions. Eddie, can I email this to you and pull it up? But fifteen or twenty other spots. But fifteen or twenty other spots that have way over thirty.
Yeah, wh- which code are you referring to? Okay, so planning and zoning does not enforce the fire code, so that would be the the fire department?
Sure.
When you say fifteen or tw- twenty other fifteen.
I can.
Are you talking about our divisions?
Yes. I can briefly, I mean, I can.
I I believe you, I believe you.
There's many of them that that are in existence now, uh Hopper Hills Farms. Beisler Ridge. I can tell you how many, so um. Upper Head has sixty-three houses on it that that has one access point um.
I'd be curious to know when those subdivisions went in and when the code came in. Whether those were predating the code. Being changed or if they're consistent with when the code was there, I don't know. You're telling me that there are fifteen or twenty out there, I'm just simply saying, I don't know. When if that code changed, you know, if those subdivisions went in in two thousand three and the code changed in two thousand five, I don't know.
Without researching, I wouldn't know it either, Alan, when I became. Responsible for plan review.
Right.
And code and code management. For several years, it has been insane. Like, I do not know the exact how to change.
I'm looking through that timeline.
Twenty in twenty seventeen, I couldn't tell you.
I'm just looking for what that potential timeline is, because we also have stormwater issues too in some subdivisions. Where they didn't do any retention or anything, they didn't have to, because it changed in nineteen ninety-one, they were built in nineteen eighty-six, so.
I I guess my point being is. There there's other subdivisions out there that they're accessing without, and it meets the code by just putting the stuff.
Well, it's your point is well taken, that it does, it does meet that code, but perhaps you're pointing out an insufficiency in our code. That we're gonna need to address, not your problem.
Sure.
But one that we're gonna need to to address.
And and I what I believe you guys, looks like you adopted the international fire code or or something close to.
The section, and this is one of the appendices of the Ohio Fire.
Yeah, Ohio.
Just, but the Ohio, the entire fire code is based on the international code.
Yeah, so it it's basically an international code, and that international code has these exceptions that we're talking about. So that it's the whole international code that allows the the stub for future.
Understood, but that may be, that may be an issue that we need to discuss. Outside of this discussion.
So. Besides that, like I said, I thank you for taking away too much of of your time, more than you probably would have want, but. I wanted to be thorough and get through um all of Eddie's concerns and kind of point out or. You know, how we interpreted the code versus your staff, um I'd also like to point out that obviously the uh. Clare Claremont County uh zoning um board that voted to approve this unanimously, well. They don't approve it, but to recommend approval, and that your your planning and zoning um people also unanimously. Uh recommended this for approval, so thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I promise, so I'm Patrick Hughes, I'm with T B L Law, I represent the applicant, Mr. Mississippi Houston, Joe's you, his business partner. I'm mostly here to answer any questions that you all have, obviously, my perspective is from that of the applicant. So you all know that, so I'm not gonna tell you your job, my job is to advise them how to comply with the law, your zoning ordinance. And to explain to them that what we're doing here is a quasi adjudicatory function. So you're a legislative body most of the time, and you administer the township tonight. You're here reviewing the decision of the zoning commission, which is an appointed body. There are the subject matter experts, that's all they do is the zoning, they've made a recommendation to you. So that's what I'm helping my client and applicant walk through that process to understand that tonight. You all are operating somewhat as a court, we're building a record, you're reviewing the record, you're asking questions. But the role of all of us here tonight is limited to. Are we in compliance with the zoning ordinance? Um, our position is yes, uh but when we talk about things that we like or don't like. The ones that matter for decision-making purposes are those that are laid out in the zoning ordinance, I think as Eddie properly pointed out. The fire issues are permitting issues and fire code issues, not zoning issues, and these things all play hand in hand together. Uh but. Having said that, we've advised the client. Look at all these different facets of what you have to do, some are gonna be regulated by the building code department, code enforcement. Permitting, some are gonna be regulated by the zoning commission, some are the fire department, et cetera. So we have kind of a narrow view, or a narrow scope of what we're doing here tonight from our perspective. We are establishing that we believe we've complied with the zoning ordinance, but. I won't over lawyer it, I do wanna point out, because I'm also an advocate. The Huesmans own this property. They're paying taxes on the property. They want to invest a significant amount of money in Pierce Township. They wanna live in Pierce Township, this is not some large national home building company. Coming in looking to build production housing. These are gonna be custom homes, consistent with that. We looked at the underlying zone as Jeff has pointed out, and there was some question about that when we were in front of the zoning commission. Because the history indicates that. At one point it was rezoned P U D, another point it was rezoned P U D R. And that was from the original zone designation, it still remains on the map of single-family residential. We weren't quite sure, we couldn't get a clear answer, and I think all the parties involved, including the township, weren't very sure. At the end of the day, we're trying to do a better development, so that threshold issue, is it a PUD zone now? Did it revert back through some defunct process to the S F R? Jeff showed you what an S F R development would look like. It it doesn't have the same requirements on preservation of the trees, preservation of the slopes, et cetera. A- and the traffic, thank you, so the. That that's not the goal here, as I pointed out, the applicant is looking to build. A better community within this community. And so that's why we're pursuing. The P U D R zone change. And confirming that that is the zoning or changing it from S F R. In doing that, we've gone above and beyond, in our opinion, of what we need to do, we've. Attempted and we appreciate the thorough job that Eddie has done, that the fire department has done in getting us here. The zoning commission had a very active meeting, in fact, we had multiple meetings. Uh built a record, and that record's now being rebuilt in front of you all, so. We appreciate the time you're taking and the attention you're giving it, you're obviously paying attention to all of the details. That Tim has presented, but. I just wanted to kind of point out those things that this is, this is an effort to improve upon what the existing zoning would allow. And we're doing that because it will add value in Pierce Township. It'll be reflective of the intention of the applicants to make this a really top-notch development. Uh so I'm happy to end now and answer any questions that you might have. Uh but again, we do really appreciate your time and consideration on this matter, and I'll stop there, thank you very much, oh, yes, sir.
So um, you know, oftentimes I find that. W- we pit this P U D versus S F R. And that's really the the scary boogeyman under the bed, right, S F R? Cause it'll look horrible, it'll be terrible, more traffic, there'll be more digging, there'll be more houses, tell me. Under our code, in your opinion, how many houses would be there under S F R?
We'd we'd have to plan that design, we have a tentative plan.
Well, uh so if if I could for a second now, I'm sorry, I'm gonna. Get a little bit more candid and maybe help us then kind of, I'll just let you know kind of what I'm thinking and be real honest with you about. About my perspective on this is that um. You're looking at what you stated as one point two nine. Um, houses per acre, right? Which if you if you reverse it back is a point seven acre lots, right, as. It's kind of lots, but the acreage is thirty, twenty-nine, thirtieth acres. And if you divide the amount of homes you're proposing, I think thirty-nine in there, that's what you get. But I I I'm thinking that uh more or less, if you're looking at the feasible buildable area, economically reasonably feasible buildable area. You're somewhat limited on that lot from a builder's perspective, because if you wanna go and you wanna start building on the hillside and things. It's gonna cost a lot more to to do that, so so you're kind of limited, and I appreciate the green space that you're. Giving us, I do, but I think that what you're limited to do from an economic perspective. Is 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 up kind of on on the top, and so from my perspective, what I'm looking at, and what I think is in the spirit of how I've. You know, made determinations and looked at P U Ds since I since I've been in office is is consistent. And the one part of the um of the Ohio Revised Code that you kind of stopped short of. Is that it says within a planned unit development, the township zoning regulations. Where applicable, need not be uniform, but may vary in order to accommodate unified development and. To promote the public health, safety morals and the other purposes of this section. So public health, safe morals, so it my perspective is I view it as like. It has to be better off than what it would have been under our typical zoning, right, what what's the benefit? Um, in in addition to what you could typically get, and I I mean. The spread out lots you guys were proposing in your other diagram actually didn't look that bad, I mean. Um, you know, i- i- how would this be better, how, you know, I I would think um from what I my parochial view of things with legendary run and. You know, what we have in the township currently, that would be a pretty good example of of a well-designed uh public, it provides a lot of public benefit. Uh we have a golf course associated with it, we have walking paths, we have other things, so that's where I have a hard time. Justifying moving off our current, you know, typical residential zoning, which you guys are, obviously you know you're welcome to have that if you want. Um, into something like this, I just, I I fail to see that last part of the O R C where that fits in. And that's where I'm having a hard time.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, it's kind of what I do for a living, is look at those sections. You have to look at those in connection with the case law as well, so. Tonight, we're governed here by your local ordinances, we're governed by Ohio Revised Code. But we're also governed by a common law case law that wraps that all together. Courts have routinely and historically interpreted laws. Such as this. Zoning ordinances, et cetera. Very strictly, they require. No arbitrariness, so the challenge of things like we can protect the safety, et cetera, is that you have to show. A rational connection to your law, you can't just say that, there has to be some law that guides the property under, and here's why. It's a property right, it's one of the fundamental rights that this country is built around. Is property rights, and so when you impose an ordinance, a zoning ordinance to be specific. You are limiting property rights, and anytime you're taking away a fundamental right. The courts say you have to strictly construe and s- stick to what the law says on its face. Um, and that's what we're asking. The ordinance here, we comply with.
Hold on, just a second. When you say that, you're saying that we have to strictly enforce our zoning code. P U Ds are not a given, they are something that we allow, that you come to ask us for. So this is not a by right.
To a degree, if we meet.
But in our, but it's also a matter of opinion.
Interpretation.
Is is uh you know, sorry, but also like I have a hard time. Like, not only is it not a benefit, it's a detraction, you know, we don't have, and we're having a hard time getting the access points, we have that funky intersection. Uh down at Davis and Nine Mile that we're gonna continue to add, you know, traffic to, we have water, um runoff. Uh. You know, concerns on Nine Mile with people's sewers flooding into their houses when it rains really hard, things like that, I just. I I'm just having a hard time understanding.
That's the the general role of this body generally. As a legislative body and an administrative body, but tonight we're here to talk about, does this application comply with? The township's zoning ordinance?
No, let's 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 go for some more what ifs here for just a second, because it's gonna be fun for a little bit. So. Why would you even ask for a P U D, tell me why?
So to your point. A P U D is designed to give everybody involved. The township, the zoning department, developer flexibility. In what can be developed there.
Right.
That flexibility doesn't apply to, it's not a to- totally discretionary choice for a local government to say yes or no. On P U D, there has to be.
But if you have a by right that you can go ahead and construct the S F R, the boogeyman in the room. If you have a by right to do that. Then why wouldn't you just go ahead and do that?
Because we believe we can build a better subdivision that will have a better economic impact for the developer. Or the township, because your evaluations are gonna be higher.
You can talk later.
We're gonna, they're gonna pay more in taxes, it's going to be a more aesthetically pleasing development. It's gonna create some differentiation, I know it may not be as much differentiation as we hope for, but. There are certain free market constraints at play here, but we do have different architecture. And we do have different sized lots, you're right, there's some slopes, we've attempted to avoid those slopes. Which is what a P U D says we need to do, and we're willing to do that as opposed to bringing in bulldogs.
Now I'm gonna, I'm gonna drill down on that.
Sure.
I see the green. That you've put all the way around the edges. And you did not provide me, well, maybe this big map over here is a topo. I see a lot of underneath there squiggly lines, which tells me those are slopes, you can't build on those anyway. So you're counting those as green space you've given to us, correct? You couldn't build on them anyway.
Two points.
Well, you you can. You can build on a certain amount of them, which was what's allowed in the in in the P U D.
So it's, but if you did an S F R, getting to my college point.
We can.
Expenses would go way out.
Well. I laid it out the best of my, I I mean.
I appreciate your candor, I do, I appreciate, I mean, we're kind of drilling down, it's just, we're trying to figure out what what's best for the people in the township and make a good decision.
I I don't, I don't disagree with that, but I mean, this isn't. Forever my lay, I mean, this isn't an unfeasible, I mean, I I'll be candid with you, but I didn't spend a. Ton of time laying this thing out, but I do this every day, so I I've followed.
How many units is that?
Yeah, that's what I wanna do.
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight.
There you go, there's your monster. Thirty-seven versus thirty-nine?
Well, I think what I looked at with the plat with the thirty-nine was like um point two, and that's why I wanted to bring up the uh. Uh one point two houses, one point two nine houses per acre, which would have been about point seven seven acres. Per house, which would have been about three quarter acre lots, if you're looking at the entire thing, but you're not, so each each. Each uh particular plat would be about point two acre. You know, for each house, uh but generally, that's what I saw, point two, two, point two five.
And that's without our slope regs that would stop you from building on a particular slope, that would take away some potential. Lots, am I correct?
Oh, on this.
Yeah, S F R.
I don't think there are hardly any slope regs in the asset.
The other part that I did see as well was there was a house back there. And underneath the house could be septic and water, um cistern, things like that, and it was recommended not to build on top of where that. Where that house and garage were, so that might be another limitation on where you can build, of course, unless you wanna jump through the hoops. Figuring it out, they might, you know, but that was another, I did see that, and and I think that sat back on the. On the back edge of that um parcel.
Right, so yes, so that's the slope rules, but obviously if we go to the. Go to the S F R, we don't have those requirements to save the trees or the slope, so. Generally, we'll probably cut it down and fill in some valleys to.
But you'll do that anyway.
Well.
You'll do that anywhere on this site, right?
No, not not really, I mean, we're. Really following that plan.
So when you follow the plateau, you've got less digging, less excavating, am I right?
Correct, but if I need bigger lots. Correct, but if I need bigger lots.
But you still have to have retention, because that's county's requirement.
But, you know, but taking away more trees.
Well, I think the trees is kind of a strong man argument, no offense, but it's kind of like none of us ever said anything about trees. I never, I what I'm concerned about is water runoff and density and quality of development. And if this PUD meets the Ohio Revised Code, uh that last part about some some kind of benefit to the township, if if we're moving off of our standard residential zoning, and I I mean, you guys are welcome to make your argument all you want. I mean, I'm not, the tree part, we I I just don't wanna get, I just don't think that's real productive. I don't, none of us mentioned trees. I don't, you know. Yeah, I mean, some of some of the roots might soak up water and that might be, you know, an an argument for downhill um drainage with the folks on Nine Mile, but that's not necessarily like, you know, I I think there's bigger issues here that we we should focus on other than.
I appreciate what you're saying, but your ordinance, like I was saying, we can only do what the ordinance says we have to do that. Not applies to all of us. The ordinance says protect the trees.
But can but can we also say that the ordinance says planned unit development, which is a benefit we offer as a township, that we do not have to offer? We do not, we are not required to give.
It it may be.
Can we agree? Can we agree that we are not required to give?
Yes, sir. No, no, I, there's a nuance.
There is not. Yes or no? It's a yes or no answer, council. I'm just, I'm just teasing.
I'm not a trial lawyer. We do buildings, but no cross-examination.
I'm just playing with.
No, but my point on that is, I understand what you're saying, and I agree, but there's a nuance. You passed a law that says we have these PUDs available.
Right.
And if you do items one through ten, you're eligible for that PUD. If you don't, you're not, but it's not totally discretionary. You can't say to one person, well, we wanna give you the PUD, so we're gonna do it. And to another person, we don't wanna give you the PUD, so we're not.
Yeah, yeah, and I get that. But as I'm sure, that's where I think you've been really consistent.
We're the we're the flexibility. Well, we've given this site two PUDs in the past.
We have, yeah, we have, we have actually voted no on a number of PUDs as a board, as a group.
Yeah, and I appreciate you, but the flexibility we're talking about happens during the PUD, and and I understand that you all have to make the policy decisions within the confines of the ordinance and the applicable law. And if, but what we're appealing to this board to do is to recognize that the developer and its team have really done everything they can to design and ask for your permission to build a high-quality development. Uh, we're, I mean, the money they've spent on engineers and lawyers and site planning is significant. And we didn't, we didn't do that because we wanted to build a junky development. We we wanna build a development where the developer wants to live.
Not to build a.
You you're gonna live there?
So that, I mean, that it's not a legal issue, but it does frame the discussion. That's why we want to do the PUD, because it gives us the flexibility. It also gives us the requirements, preserve green space, whether there's a big slope or not, it's the Ohio River, and it's all we got. Right. So there's, I mean, preserving that's important. And I think my client's goals are consistent with the objectives and goals expressed in the PUD ordinance. And and that's why we're asking, the the effort is not to create a comparison with the with the with the big monster, as you described. What we're trying to do is say, the existing ordinance allows this, and this is just okay. If we do a pub, we can do this, and this is a lot better than okay. And that's really what we're asking for tonight, is for you all to allow us to do something that's a lot better than okay. And in the process, we will comply with the fire code ordinance. We will comply with the sanitation requirements, the water requirements. I guarantee you, Duke's not gonna let us do anything in there. He's and that's a private legal issue between the property owner and Duke. Dealt with Duke easements my entire career. We can't do anything there. It's gonna be preserved. And if somebody doesn't like the building because of those easements and high-top power lines, they'll buy elsewhere. That's when the free market situation comes in. So we're regulated there as well. We're gonna comply when we come back to get the permits to do the building. There's a whole nother set of rules we are going to comply with. And in getting there, I'm hopeful that the presentations from Tim and the the present comments from our developer and plans show that we wanna do a good development and we're accepting it. I'll leave it there unless you have any good questions.
No, you're you're fine. But um just to comment a little, and you're welcome to comment again on this if you want. Um, I think it's a good discussion, but uh a little bit with the um uh the fact that it was it was approved through our zoning commission with conditions uh and then brought to us tonight. And there isn't a few of those items that with the fire um access and things like that that are kind of a, you know, trust me type of thing. And I and I always like to have uh, you know, things kind of laid out as well when they get to us. Um, just to have it codified and 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 know that these things are gonna be, how they're gonna be dealt with and 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 have a roadmap for that. And a few of these things, we don't have a roadmap.
Absolutely. I how I would say that is, this isn't the final step, right? There's a final development plan that needs to be approved. So as long as we pick an option here tonight, if he says, you you know, we want the option to come up the back, we're gonna we're gonna submit that final development plan that will meet all the requirements and we'll have the actual engineering design, and it will be reviewed to make sure it meets meets those requirements. So, you know, I I'm happy to to engineer it. And if you pick one of those stubs, we will make sure that we design it adequately and it will get reviewed and approved during the that the final development process. So cause you approve it here, doesn't mean anyone doesn't look at it again. It's and and we're happy to do. That's why we gave four options. I mean, I, like I said, I've been trying to work with the with the uh chief, and we're trying to make everyone happy, you know. You saw where the planning commission says we want it, he wants it there, so we're 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 bending over backwards. Um, as you can see with our stormwater regulations, we're more than happy to go above and beyond what the requirements are. We oversize that basin. We're we're, we'll put in more BMPs. Um, I just, it's and you guys aren't here, but we've we've kind of been getting pulled in all directions and we're trying to make everyone happy. Yeah, so.
All right, thank you.
Under SFR, the SFR framework, are there, is it required that there is a, that there are two ingress egress routes?
It does. There are different requirements for multifamily versus single family in that code section. It's based on single-family dwelling units of thirty or more in that specific section that we're talking about right now. There is a different section that I didn't send him, which was the language that is the number of multifamily dwelling units off of a single access. Those numbers are different. Uh, but for single family, single dwellings, they, that is the number that's based on thirty. When you get multifamily dwellings, condos, condos, apartments, there's a different number off of a single access. So I believe it's two hundred units off of a single access for a park, for an apartment complex.
So either way, with whichever.
Yeah. What's that? Right, you can even, there's other options too. They can reduce it, hold it and cap it at the thirty, so they take that existing format here, but scale back the exact same plan, make bigger lots and keep third under thirty houses. And it's fine, they don't need the second access road. Uh, if they wanna do, like he said, they could have that existing number, but a residential sprinkler system. I gave them the that language also. Uh, it's called NFPA thirteen D system, which is domestic or a home sprinkler. They're less demanding in the initial construction phases typically in my experience. But I was told last year in a project, it's about a dollar fifty a square foot when you build new. When you retro, it's usually about four to seven per square foot if you retro it into a place. But when you build them, it's a little bit more convenient and easier to do that home thirteen NFPA thirteen D system. Uh, that would be the minimum for that development. So there's some other options that are there. Um. Obviously, for us, we like the remote access. I think it's fair to say the single-family plan that he proposed up on the screen tonight had a fire department access. It was uh, did not have the S turn and turnabout in it. But it was more direct and off of a little bit different location in Nine Mile, so that could be feasible. Um. That's kind of where I was looking at. And I didn't see where the stub that he articulated that he put in this in this first section, which was about here, where it's yellow, and he said was in the stream. I did not get a measurement to figure out. He said it was a hundred and or a thousand fifty-two feet. I haven't looked at it to see if that lined up with being five hundred and some odd feet away. I didn't look at that. Um. He said specifically, he didn't include those dimensions originally in the things that we had. So it's all things that could work out. It's not on paper, on a drawing yet, so.
All right, um, so.
Just follow up to kind of.
Yeah, you're you're fine. Briefly, we 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 want to get a little public comment if anybody.
Just just to emphasize, the the conditions from the zoning commission were that we work with the fire department, which we continue to do. And I think what Jeff and developer have expressed is, we'll put a second access road in, and we'll do it in a way for or sprinkling. What, and that's something that if you approve this zone change or accept the recommendation, that doesn't mean we're absolved from putting in a second access stub or sprinkler system. That means before we start building or before we get a final development plan approved, you're gonna have another chance to make sure we're doing what we said you were doing. So I just wanted to kind of cap that off.
Yeah, because.
Say we'll keep working.
Right. Well, it was stated earlier in the in the discussion that the fire code superseding zoning code. I I believe Eddie pointed that out earlier, so yeah, we 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 understand that part.
Right. So do we have any any uh any public comment? Or will you guys have any more discussion, people, or public comment?
I I guess then we're gonna get staff opinion on this newly presented information. At some point.
Yeah, so I mean, my my recommendation in in past professional experience, there there would be an engineered plan submitted and staff given time to to review that thoroughly for you guys and then provide a response back. But it, you know, kind of um on the fly, I I wouldn't recommend, you know, moving too rapidly without having a a real formal document. We don't, we don't even have paper copies of these of this information at this time.
They presented quite a bit of additional information, and I just wanted to get your gut instinct as to whether or not that, you know, satisfied some or all concerns that were raised. Uh, Mr. Williams, do you have a? Okay.
Yeah, so my my major concerns, and and it really just boils down to seven point oh three. Um, so basically, page fourteen of the staff report lays out um A through H, number of different items that are considered. And so we we look at it from a very black and white perspective. We compare it to the land use plan, and we look at the different conditions that are laid out in the PUD. Um, some some real clear items that that jump out that have not, some of some of which have not even been addressed are, for instance, the panhandle lots that um they're required to have sixty feet of road frontage. There are two panhandle lots right near the front entrance that do not meet that requirement at a minimum. Um, there are also land on on lot landscaping requirements. Uh, the plan that you have before you, and there has been ample time to be provided a new plan. Yeah, it's a completely outdated landscape plan that actually shows forty-two lots instead of thirty-nine and uh does not show any on lot landscaping. So again, the some, these kinds of items are are very basic requirements that the applicant has been aware of since at least March when this process began. Um, it's incumbent upon the applicant to familiarize themselves with the PUD regulations. And of course, if there are any questions or deviations, there is a process for waiver requests and so forth. And so we're happy to work with them on on all of these issues where where necessary, but um tho- those are just a couple of just the main items that that I don't see addressed here at a minimum.
All right. So we're gonna do a quick, a quick, a quick rebuttal, and then we're gonna get to public, because I do want the public, a lot of these folks have been sitting here a long time.
As as I um put in my presentation, um, Planning and Zoning Commission was on board with um making it a requirement in text in the HOA that each person who's putting, building their lot can pick their landscaping as long as they follow the requirements of that, because they didn't want, they didn't want the developer picking the homeowner's landscaping. So that was a suggestion by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And um, this updated plan, Eddie, I I did catch um your panhandle lots, and they are adjusted. Um, I think there was a twenty-foot, and I think, I think I read the wrong code, but it's twenty-five foot. Um, the the plan up here has the twenty-five foot and the sixty-foot um sixty-foot lot width and twenty-five foot um twenty-five foot panhandle's um right there. So um sorry, I didn't, we we were scrambling with the fire chief and moving lots around to try and get that access.
Our guys have been scrambling. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, public comment, uh, open floor discussion. Any anybody wanna come up and speak? Please come up to the microphone if you'd like to talk and state your name and address for the record if possible.
Uh, my name's Terry McFlure. I live on Judy Con Drive off of Hopper Hill. Um, my concern is traffic. You guys have talked a lot about Davis Road intersection, but no talk of the Hopper Hill intersection. And a lot of the residents on Davis travel to Hopper Hill. And I'm not sure that intersection has been studied for crashes, but they have been separate. Um, we've lived there thirty years, over thirty years. Um, we came to Pierce Township because we like the half-acre size lots. Even though ours is, you know, half acre, it's it's nice to not have your neighbor right next door, you know, like a hands reach up. Um. I don't know, I see the benefit in single family, and I see the benefit in PUD because it would have public property to like use as trails. Um, so but I'm just worried about the traffic and emergency services being able to get to our area, which right now is strained already. We don't see police there. The fire department, you can hear them come for a long time up Davis Road. And it it's worrisome that more people will be there with less services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Stan Chabelow. I'm the zoning commission. I have a question for our legal representative. I've asked this question multiple times. As far as I'm concerned, this has been zoned PUDR. And the lawyer has bandied around the fact that we just make it revert to single-family residential. And I want to know, is that allowable? As far as I'm concerned, it's still zoned PUDR. The the PUD was not acted upon, but we, the zoning commission and the trustees, have not changed that designation.
My understanding from talking to Mr. McCarthy, that it's a single-family residence, and they're seeking a zone change tonight to PUDR. So that's what we're doing here this evening.
Functionally, there is an SFR layer underneath this property. There's a nuance with the resolution, which it's it it's not required that it be rezoned back off of PUD, but it is, it has a PUD on top of an SFR. The PUD is defunct because it does not have a final development plan. The resolution specifically states that in the event that that happens, in order to not create a takings or preventing the property owner from using their property, they are then permitted to to utilize the underlying base SFR. So it there's specific language that basically all else, they can use the underlying SFR. But right now, the PUD is just is defunct because there was no final development.
But that is, I mean, that's a very good question, because there are several other parcels that are the same way. Where uh a PUD that is awarded years ago, when do they sunset? And and how do they sunset?
Yeah, these these PUDs, so we have a couple of PUDs as you're referencing that some were developed prior to even the new iterate. But we have a new PUD resolution that came about just a couple of years ago that just predates me. But nonetheless, if a final development plan does not come through in a stated period of time, I believe it's about a year, I believe it's a year, that does not occur. The PUD, the like, the purple on the map stays, but the underlying zoning can you can utilize. So you don't have an unused.
I understand that part.
Yeah.
That the underlying is always available.
Right.
But. The question that I have is, is that did it, did it expire? Did we? Were we required? And perhaps. Other legal counsel can 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 point this out. Is there somewhere in the state law or. Somewhere else that states that it goes away if not acted upon?
The P U D?
Yeah.
I don't know that it necessarily goes away, but what we're, what if it's even if it's zoned P U D right now, there's to be a zone change to a P U D R. So we're still looking at a zone change application.
Okay, so the original would have been just a P U D based on the original, the code at the time. That that took place. Because. Just so I understand, I'm gonna say it out loud. I'm gonna walk through it in my own head. Um, which is a scary place, but. So if I walk in, I want a P U D, I get a P U D for a site. I get forty-eight condos. The residents raise hell. They decide they're gonna do a referendum. They get the project blown out. Because that's what happened on this site. Um. But I, but my original P U D was for forty-eight homes of X variety with X layout. So that is totally different thing than what they're asking for, so therefore it wouldn't apply. Because it's two different things.
They're they're applying for a different application.
Yeah, we approved a P U D R that has that detail on.
Got it.
And just to to add to the discussion about the uh stub road. Um. That when the property next door was worked upon, we asked them to. Create a stub road across there and to speak to this owner. And that's why that original stub road was there. But once the other property stopped. Um, we said you may as well take it away, which is what they did. Um, but we we specifically said that you have to go to the fire department and create another entrance. And the suggestion at the time was up the top of, you know, Davis Road, that it's the crest of the hill, in other words.
I just don't see how you get a fire truck through there. I mean, that that's a tough turn just with my truck. You know, how are you gonna get a a truck that's three times the length of my truck?
I mean, if you provide the data that has. We give them the data that our apparatus size. We plan that it meets a certain wheel path report, we can generate a computer report that shows that apparatus is turned. And the final verification, once it's built, we put a truck on it and make sure it happens.
So this is.
Then the HOA is gonna be responsible for maintaining that road. Clearing that roadway whenever there's snow or ice on it, whatever. That would have to all be worked out into HOA things, the gating, the Knox box key would be on the gate. So we could lock it so it's just not used by the general public. All that stuff would be worked out as well through code. Um, but if it engineers out. That it's able to do it, it's not the preferred mean. I'd rather have a whole street that went into it. That could be used, it would be bobbled, it would be great, but at the minimum, we need that. Fire department access road, which has minimum minimalistic criteria.
Uh, it would have to be engineered. There was a bunch of grading stuff that I saw would need to be engineered with clay and things. There's a lot of clay under the ground. In that area, just. I mean, are we zoning it to P U D R L P L P U D R seems lack of plan development seems more appropriate for this one. Honestly, and I don't I don't like coming here and having a lack of 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 substance as to what I'm approving. I just, I'm not, I'm not a fan of it. I don't, I don't. It just seems fly by the seat of your pants to me, and uh I'm I'm generally, I guess, am I deliberating here?
Not yet. Did did your. Question, answer.
Uh, any more public comment? You want to come up, man? Thank you. We we zoom these, and there might be thousands of people watching this evening, so we.
Yeah.
Make sure they can hear you.
Tens of tens.
So so you're saying that you would make Davis Road access for fire department to come up there if they needed to. Um. What about cars, traffic flow coming up that hill? Um, evening rush hour. When I come up that hill from two seventy-five, I've come that way to get to my area, so I don't have to go through the. I don't know, Hopper Hut intersection, it's a nightmare. Horrible, horrible intersection. Um, just let all your residents know, that's a bad intersection. Um. That um, coming up the hill, the sun is beaming right in your eyes. As your property is coming into my my vision, and then I have Michael right there. And if the roads are icy, if the sun is like really strong. We're not gonna see anybody coming out of their street, and there's like, and the road's not light, there's a huge. There there's infrastructure issues that need to be addressed.
Thank you. Um, anyone else for for public comment? No? Okay. All right. So. Um, you guys have anything else before I make a ask for a motion to close the public hearing? The motion of close the public hearing.
So moves second.
Roll call.
Mr. Panhala?
Yes. Yes.
And Mr. Panhala?
Yes. Okay, so I will now read the um recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We've discussed these. Uh, read them for the record. Um, this is the Claremont County. Um. Zoning, what what's the name of the? Department of Community and Economic Development. This is from Taylor Corbett. At its regular meeting held Tuesday, August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, the Claremont County Planning. Commission voting unanimously to recommend approval for Pierce Township zoning map amendment case Z C two zero two two zero. Zero two with the following conditions. Conform to all Article seven, uh, colon, seven dot zero four P U D development standards. Add a detailed cross-section with the product product type listed. For the proposed hiking trail, all portions of hiking trails are to be located within open space. All dedicated open space shall total at least thirty percent of the proposed site. And be designed to accommodate at least five percent of active open space. Add detail for proposed active amenities. All easements will be required to be depicted on the record plat and shall state any condition. And restrictions of said easements, i.e. O H E. A wetland easement and determination must be completed for the subject property due to the presence of hydric. Soil types. A four oh one slash four oh four EPA permit will need to be obtained due to the wetland area on site. Stormwater basins are required to be located within open space lots, not overlapping building lots. Remove all existing structures on the site before development. Right, and then or uh. Zoning. Uh, commit um staff. Recommendation, am I recording this correctly? Zoning Commission, yeah. I don't want to mess any of this up at this point. At their October nineteen twenty-two, twenty twenty-two public hearing, the zoning commission voted recommend approval of Z. C two zero two two zero four four zone map amendment with the following conditions. The applicant removes lots twenty-nine and twenty-four. The applicant will work with the fire department, replace lot thirty-nine with a secondary access. Resulting the removal of the stub roadway. Consolidation of the trail network south of lots twenty-three and twenty-five connect. Through future lots twenty-eight and twenty-seven. Cut. Liberation. Wait. Can you? Okay.
If we were to approve this. Would the developer be required to, uh, before some other additional la- layer of approval? Be required to pr- uh pr- present us with, I guess, a final um. Plan in terms of that access, secondary access road or versus whether they're going to disregard that. And install sprinklers.
You you know, it would all depend on how the approval is made. Generally speaking, traditionally, you'd want to see the entire layout because of a brand-new road would could have profound impacts on. The density, if you were to lose a lot, for instance, or if lots were significantly altered. Theoretically, the plan you'd be seeing at the final stage would be. Substantively different than what you have before you now. So. Recommendation would be that you would, you would want to see it again, most likely, that as far as due diligence is concerned. It could be conditioned, obviously, that you don't, but you know, it's, there's, that's more discretionary. I just wouldn't recommend it.
But as the zoning code, the the P U D code is, we have outlined. The the changes that you mentioned, what, explain to everybody what those. If we were to say yes tonight, what are the next steps? That they would have to go through and. Who would make the final approval? That they met those those thresholds?
Yeah, so through the final development plan stage, this body would not see the plans again. It would be purely administrative. The county has a design plan process, and then the township has an administrative review where we would make sure that the plan that's submitted at the final stage. Is substantively compliant with the plan that would be approved today.
Uh, to be sure, aren't you supposed to make sure that these Ts and Is are crossed before they get to us right now?
Yes.
So we're supposed to. Right. Yeah, I mean, there's no logic. There's no logic to that.
But since there are, but since there are loose ends to that. As there are. Then. What I'm trying to get at is is that it doesn't come back to us. Once those loose ends are tightened up. We never see it again. It leaves us and goes to Eddie to make sure that those loose ends are all tied up.
Yeah, wh- wh- which is the process, and that that would be the process moving forward out of here if we were to approve it. Um, but the process, my point is to compare it to the process moving into here as it should have been. Uh, a lot of those Ts and Is were typically crossed when they got to us on the front end, which they weren't. And we're supposed to push it out the back end and say, trust the process.
Yes.
It'll be fine.
That's kind of what I'm getting at.
I mean, it just.
Yeah, I don't know that I want to just trust the process, you know, I um, I still have reservations about that. Uh, stub concept, and if, you know, I want to make sure I understand that thoroughly. And does that in any way hamper potentially or change permanently? Or limit the potential development as a new developer of that adjacent property might want to see it done? Uh, so I I still have a reservation about that, and the other, and the angle. Uh, the other outlet point, I I don't know that that is a safe place for. A secondary out ingress egress, and I guess there is the option of the sprinkler. Topic, but I I want to make sure I understand what we're. If we give it, if we offer an approval, are we approving saying? Do these things, but you don't have to tell us what you're gonna do tonight. Do one of these things.
Yeah, there are cer- there are certain conditions that you could that you could do that on. But then obviously, there are some that reach a threshold that could alter the actual layout and substance of the subdivision. So theoretically, one one option would be, hey, you know, would you agree to have? Blue paint as as a particular, you know, palette style. You mo- you wouldn't necessarily need that to come back to this body. They, you could, you could place that, and we could go ahead and staff could enforce that at an administrative level. But if there's something that alters the overall functionality and flow of that site, I would recommend that it come back. Some bodies are comfortable saying, well, you know, just add that road in and. And and whatnot, but. With the P U D, part of the purpose is that it's a, it's a higher standard. And so there, you know, the quality, the standard is a higher level, so generally, that would be taken care of before it even comes to this body. Shouldn't even have to worry about it.
Well, um, I mean, personally, I appreciate that. I don't like the fact that it's sloppy, but moreover, um. You know, I just fail to see the public health, safety. Good, that's that's kind of stated in the O R C in regards to P U D and a reason, a a. Compelling reason to move off of our single-family residential zoning for uh development like this. I see the benefit. Through density from an economic perspective with developer. I don't see the benefit from from the township's perspective with development like this. And that's the. That's the main issue for me. For what it's worth.
We done deliberating?
I don't have anything further to say. I'm willing to be deliberative if you would like. But I don't have any further questions to come. I'm I'll be flexible.
Okay.
There seems to be a deal working over here. I'm curious. Is there something we need to know, Eddie?
No, just just making sure, you know, you may have the zoning commission, planning, which are recommendations.
Got it. Thank you. All right, so. Do I have any motions?
Well, what are our, what are our options tonight? What's on the menu? Gentlemen, what is your, what is your uh pleasure tonight?
I would not be in favor of approving a proposal that doesn't guarantee. Uh, my concern, satisfying my concern about that stuff. I I don't want to be in a situation where we limit. The development uh or the rights of the owner adjacent. I I want to make sure that is satisfied. I don't think I could vote to approve this unless I knew with certainty that we were not infringing upon that adjacent property owner. Or limiting the the potential uh development. Of that piece of property. I I just, I I need to know that we're not doing that. Or allowing that to happen, you know, and it not come back before us for. Rediscussion, reapproval. I don't want my name on that.
Well, and I also applaud the the um planning commission for actually looking at. The other plans and trying to see how they marry up, but the downside is is we don't know how they're gonna marry up because we don't know what's gonna come.
Yeah, that's it.
So you 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 were doing your best guess, but. You're right, it might not be the next developer's plan even cut through or even want to talk to you guys. So that that creates a problem, which is ser- is not insurmountable. You just put in. But. It's it's left undone. It's hard for me to jump in and say, let's. Let's jump and and get this done now. I I don't know, am I allowed to say anything to get any more information?
If you'd like to reopen the public.
No, no.
We're gonna have to reopen, right?
I don't, I don't know if it's gonna rely, it's just gonna drill down. That's all, just, that was all. Um. I I I'm I'm inclined to to deny. At the moment, to deny. I mean, I appreciate the work done, and I appreciate the, you know, the efforts. Um, and I think. It's an interesting project, but a challenging site. And to my colleague's point. When when you're talking about safety and health, we have to go beyond what. We were getting at it a little bit when we were talking about the road conditions. The current road conditions are X, but the future road conditions are gonna be Y. So if we're giving the P U D. We're going to be adding cars. I know that they're, you know, I saw the numbers and I'll 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 stipulate your numbers. I'll go with your numbers instead of. What I would think's coming out of there. But those are gonna be future conditions that we have to be mindful of, and the safety. You add more cars, you're gonna have more interactions. You're gonna have more slippage. That's not a good intersection. It needs to be resolved. Um, and I also think about response times to to your point. You know, the response times of the firefight and the fire trucks. You're adding more homes in this area. It's a challenge for us to get the fire trucks to your side of Hopper. Much less, how are we gonna get the fire trucks? To that one, and and the and and the, you know, E M Ts, you know, the ambulances. So those are things we have to take into consideration. And they're not things that are on your plate, but they are things that they have to be on, that have to be on our plate. Um.
I'll just interrupt you for a second. I think we're gonna need to reopen the public hearing anyways to read in the commission recommendations to make sure that those are in the record. So if you want to ask questions, let's just go forward and do that anyway. I think we read those after the record was closed, after the public hearing was closed.
Oh. Okay. I I moved to reopen.
Any second.
I have a second. So roll call.
Those through, yeah.
All these again? I have to redo? Oh, my gosh.
In, in an open. Oh, geez. Alright, anybody wants to take a bathroom break? That's the time.
Do we want to take five and do that? And then we can reopen after we do that or just plow, plow?
At its regular ma- uh, meeting held Tuesday, August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, the Claremont uh, County Planning Commission voted unanimously to re-recommend approval for Pierce Township zoning amendment case is Z C two zero two two zero zero two with the following conditions. Conform to the Article seven, seven uh, point zero four P U D development standards. Add a detailed cross-section with the product type listed for the proposed hiking trail. All portions of the hiking trail are to be located within an open space. All dedicated open space shall total at least thirty percent of the proposed uh, site to be designated to accommodate at least five percent of active open space in detail for proposed active amenities. All easements will require to be depicted on the record plat and shall state any conditions and restrictions of said easements, i.e. O H E. A wetland easement, easement assessment and determination must be completed for the subject property due to the presence of hydric soil types. A four oh one slash four oh four EPA permit will need to be obtained due to the wanted wetland area on site. Stormwater basins are required to be located within open space lots, not overlapping building lots. Remove all existing structures on site before development. That is the Claremont County zoning.
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission. Alright, our zoning commission recommendation. At their October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two public hearing, the zoning commission voted to recommend approval of Z C two zero two two dash zero zero four zone map amendment with the following conditions. The applicant removes lots twenty-nine, twenty-four. That's number one. Number two, the applicant will work with the fire department, replace lot thirty-nine with a secondary access resulting in the removal of the su- of the stub roadway. Number three, consolidation of the trail network south of lots twenty-three and twenty-five connect through future lots twenty-eight. And twenty-seven. Just a quick question, more, just trying to help understand. It says here, wetland assessment and determination must be completed for the subject property due to the presence of hydric soil types. And then it says a four oh one, four oh four EPA permit will need to be obtained due to the wetland area. So those are two separate items. When you're talking about, and I'm looking at Michael. Yeah. Walagura, okay, I got that. Or at least I didn't butcher it too much. Um, he makes an assessment here, but he doesn't, he hasn't taken it to the Army Corps of Engineers to clarify or to drill down on it to determine. And then you got the email, but once again, it's just reaffirming what he said, but then he also wrote, please note that since the US A C E has authority to determine and or verify the boundaries and regulatory status of Lotus. This investigation has been termed preliminary. Should you need a written verification, the onsite findings, a delineation report should be submitted to the Huntington District US A C E. Has that been done?
And well, well, typically, a preliminary assessment is done and then if you get approval, you just have the money to, to do that. But I mean, these guys are kind of experts in the field and, and usually it is a long one, but um, answer your question. We have not paid to have that done until, until we get approved.
Yeah, understood, but.
Staff has the whole report.
Yeah, I saw it, yeah. Yeah, I'm just saying, in, in here, it's listed, it, and I guess what I'm asking is is this, does it rise to the level of satisfying that? I, I don't think it does. I don't think it does, but I don't know.
Okay, I.
Yeah. No, the gentleman in the back actually raised his hand first. Could, could you just come on up and just state your name and we'll get you, we'll get you officially into the record.
Uh, I, I'll, I'll say that, uh, the, we would still have to do that if we don't prove today.
Yeah, under, understood, yeah. But I just wanted to make sure that that. Okay, I, I'm just trying to figure that out, just because I know that.
Do it, we'd still have to work with the fire department.
Yeah.
Uh, and put sprinklers in, so like, whether or not the sprinkler, the, the stub road or sprinklers figured out today, or that he said. It's only, it's not part of the zoning. You know, it's separate from it and stuff has to be figured out no matter what. So like to address your concern of. Uh, and then, uh, your concern about the affecting the neighbor's prop- ability to do it. I think Eddie might be able to address that very quickly because, you know. Originally, we said that, uh, part of the P U D was for them to work the neighboring property. So if there's a neigh- so if there's a neighboring property and there has a stub, stub road, like Eddie's comments or opinion to them would be to connect to the stub road that, that we have. Um, I don't think any setback requirements would change from a stub road. You can probably answer that question. I seriously doubt it would inhibit the neighbor's property to build whatever they want, but you could address that better.
Thank you. Yeah.
So. You raise an excellent point, and I think the language of condition number six of the planning commission is a four oh one, four oh four EPA permit will need to be obtained. So it's envisioning that that's going to occur in the future and it's for the reason that Jeff describes, routine operating procedure. That that gets achieved after approval. And here's the good news. If we don't get that, we'll be shut down faster than Pierce Township or Claremont County could ever do. And not only that, we'll be fined out of the business because the EPA will regulate that as well. And another point, since the hearing is open, I appreciate your latitude with me. Um, so when we were in front of the, the zoning commission. The body charged with that first level of review. We agreed at the end of it that we would resubmit whatever is finally done or finally developed back to that zoning commission. For their consideration, we are also willing to make that same committee, committee, the board of trustees that you get to see and verify that we've done what you've asked us to.
But you can appreciate the fact, being a lawyer, that that carries no weight.
I understand. But it's, it's offered in the spirit of transparency and, and, and. Chair Kelly, you raised the issue of the outstanding issue and I, I think I think the record reflects and I, I might be incorrect, but we have complied with the conditions that the planning commission put on us. And we've complied with the conditions that the Pierce Township zoning commission put on us. Uh, and, and we are continuing to work with the fire department, which is that outstanding issue that was identified. And, and that has been a logistical challenge because everybody's busy, but we supplied that information as quickly as possible. And we've committed that we will offer any of the access points. You tell us which one, we'll agree to it tonight. We'll do the stub or any of the other three access points. So, you know, I, I, I get your point. We'd like to have this buttoned up. But it's not unusual in zoning cases to not, to have an outstanding issue like that because we have to make sure we're actually serving the needs of the fire department so that they can address your point is the public safety in Pierce Township. That's on the conditions placed upon us. The condition there is that we continue to work with the fire department and if we want to button. We're open to doing that tonight. You tell us which one you want. Now, I don't think that's the best course for the township or client. But I, I, that's kind of the only outstanding issue. Eddie's third. I guarantee you, it's not going to get past him in a ministerial review if we haven't done exactly what we said we are going to do. We still need that staff level approval. So. And as an extra set of eyes, not from a legal perspective, but so that you and your job and responding to your constituents. You've taken another look. It's the same thing that the zoning commission asked us to do and we said by all means. You're right, it's not a legal process. But it's just one more thing we want to do to make sure we're doing what we agree to do. Thanks for that extra.
Oh, thank you very much. One, one real quick follow-up.
Sure.
The four oh one, uh, four oh four, that EPA permit is, applies equally to this P U D as it would to S F R. You have to do it no matter.
Whole separate regulatory scheme. If we were just doing anything up there, we're going to trigger those regulations.
So you could easily be shut down by that as well.
Yeah.
Alright, um, we're gonna, yeah, I mean, fine.
It's a, but, yeah. I understand your concerns of this not being buttoned up. I just want you to understand. I have gone out of my way calling the fire department multiple times, sent them dozens of emails. It's not as simple as just that road. When we put that road up, every lot line moves, every sorry, every lot line moves, it, it all gets configured. I mean, it's not as easy as just putting the road here. We got to regrade that shift all the lot lines. I have gone out of my way above and beyond, but I have put multiple emails. I got his email this morning. I, I got the email back from those guys this morning, so I've done my darndest. And, and I, I completely understand you want me to have these buttoned up, but we have worked our behind off.
Well, and I, and I appreciate that, but I think you have to also appreciate where I'm coming from, which is future conditions. And it's, you know, it's, it's one thing to say it's going to be lovely, it's going to be great, it's all going to work and everybody's going to be happy, it's going to be candies and roses, and everything's going to be great.
I, I agree with you, I was.
It's got to move. I've got a, you know, I, I have issues beyond just the issues that we see.
Sure.
So as you're moving things around, so are we.
Sure. No, I was just addressing Mr. Kelly's concerns, so you.
Thank you, thank.
I know that was one of your biggest concerns and I've, like I said. Called the chief multiple times, I called the assistant chief multiple times and I got an email this morning, so I've.
Right. And I, and I totally appreciate you, you've done, you've done your due diligence. I think, I think that's great. Thank you for that. Thank you very much. I, I appreciate it. The more information, the better. I think you've gotten a lot of information tonight. It's, look, applause. Um, so, uh, do I need a, a motion to, if we're done? To close the, the, the public hearing?
Public hearing.
I'll second. I'll second.
Have a motion a second?
Mr. Craven?
Yes.
Mr. Panhala?
Yes.
And?
Yes. So, and whoever put these out of order, why I had to read that whole thing again to, I'm like Ron Burgundy, I'm just reading what's on them. Alright, so, um, back to trustee deliberation.
I think we were getting ready to make a motion when we left. We, uh, I think, uh, were, were, were we in the middle of doing the motion?
No.
We hadn't quite gotten there?
Well, if there's any more discussion or if I have a motion, or what do you guys?
So I'll make the motion. I, I, I've, I've made my concerns very clear. I, that for me is, is, is a linchpin. You know, I don't have the assurance. I make a motion to deny.
I'll second that.
If, if I can just make one, one comment on page fourteen of your, of your staff report. Seven point oh three are the, the approval consideration conditions, so any references you want to make, just make sure you reference what part of this, you know, the staff report or what, what is relevant to you in making your decision as well.
You want me to restate, in other words, restate what I said earlier?
Yep.
Uh, for, as part of the motion? Is that what?
He's just talking about your deliberation.
Yeah, so in your deliberations, if you just want to make reference to staff report or whatever, whatever particulars that relate to the P U D on this page fourteen, for instance, I don't believe, you know. Well, whatever, whatever your consideration is, just make sure you reference back to seven point oh four.
You just say.
I understand. So make, make that generic statement, in other words, is that, I mean, I want to make sure I do the right.
Whatever is relevant, just, yeah.
What, what's your biggest consideration?
Just, just do based on staff's, staff's recommendation. You make your motion to deny based on staff's recommendation.
Okay. So I'm gonna, uh, make a motion to deny the requested zone change based on our staff's recommendations.
Is that good enough legally?
Alright.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion in a second.
Mr. Panhala?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Alright.
Uh, motion to adjourn?
Second. I have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I almost said yes for you.